Second, twenty twenty-three. The update also includes a revised PowerPoint presentation. Under Awards and Presentations, item number four, Adoption and Presentation of Proclamation, Designated January twenty-second through twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. The National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist this week. This agenda item was added to Awards and Proclamations. Under the Consent Agenda, under Administrator. Item number eight, Approval of the Twenty Twenty-Three B O C C Committee Assignments. This agenda, uh, was, item was added to the Consent Agenda. Under Development Services, item number fourteen. Approval of Final Platte and Associated Documents for Cottington Phase Two in District One. This agenda item was updated, uh, which, uh, updated with action requested for line number two, which includes the Cottington Community Association Joiner and the D R Horton Joiner. Under Regular Agenda, under Administrator. Item number fifty-eight, Consideration and Approval of the County Commission's Twenty Twenty-Three Legislative Priorities. And, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, that concludes the updates to the agenda.
Thank you, sir. Um, that was brief. So, Commissioners, I did have, uh, the committee assignments for twenty-three added to the Consent Agenda, just to give you a heads up, it's item number eight, but I asked around and from what I understood, no one was planning to discuss it anyway, so I added it to consent. But you're free to pull it, of course. On that note, are there any items from consent that anyone would like to pull at this time? Okay. Oh, hold on.
Uh, so yes, I'd like to call forty, forty-one, and forty-two.
Forty, forty-one, forty-two will be pulled by Commissioner Ballard.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, anyone else? Okay. So that's all there. Then, we're gonna move into Proclamations, Awards, and let's start with the fair. It's like everybody's favorite time of year. My dad says the fair is held every year, because when I was a kid, I'd say, "When's the fair?" And he'd say, "They hold it every year, the coldest week of the year, son."
That's always right.
And for a while, I believed that, and I was, I didn't know how you managed to do it.
Well, we put an order in for no rain this year.
But no rain is good.
And I'm hoping that we got the really cold weather out of the way two weeks ago. So we'd like to thank you for allowing us to come today and speak about something that we truly love, and that's our annual homecoming, which we-
Is your microphone on, just to make sure?
I believe it is.
Okay.
Can you hear me now? Maybe I'm too far away from it. Uh, but we want to thank you for allowing us to come to speak about something that we truly love, which is our annual homecoming that we call the Manatee County Fair. Uh, our fair, this year, we'll be celebrating our hundred-and-seventh anniversary of the fair, and we're gonna be opening on January twelfth, where our theme this year is "What a Sight to See in Twenty Twenty-Three." Our fair is only possible through the efforts of our hundreds of volunteers, as well as the financial support from our sponsors, uh, that they provide each year. We have eleven different committees that work together, uh, with our, uh, that, that work in conjunction. We have security, we have arts and crafts, livestock, uh, entertainment. Uh, so we have eleven different committees that work together to present our fair each year. And we would really like to thank, uh, the Manatee County Sheriff's Office, Manatee County EMS, and the Palmetto Police Department, uh, for helping us, uh, plan for a safe environment. We've been meeting with them, uh, we have a really, really good game plan, and we're looking forward to a very safe fair. Uh, we're also extremely, uh, grateful for our sponsors that contribu- contributed, uh, this year to help make our fair possible. We have over a hundred sponsors, and we're very pleased, uh, for their, for their services. It's not just financial, it's services, it's time, uh, and it's, uh, we just can't do it without them, and we greatly appreciate them. Uh, while we're only two days away from our gates opening, we have, uh, two events each year that happen, uh, prior to the fair opening. And the first one is our, um, our, our festivities began on December tenth this year with our annual Fair Queen Pageant. And, uh, this year, our Fair Queens are, uh, our Miss Manatee County Fair is Alyssa Pritchett, Pritchett. Uh, she is at school, she's a sophomore in college, so she was unable to come today. Uh, but then we have Junior Miss is Reese Williams. Uh, then we have our Little Miss is Zion LeBeuf, and then our Mini is Grayson Carpenter. So... The next event that precedes our fair, and I believe most of y'all had the opportunity to join us last week, is our V I P Distinguished Citizen. And this year, we are thrilled to announce, uh, Caliopi or Poppy and Emmanuel Manny Ramirez, uh, they were, uh, they are distinguished citizens of, uh, twenty twenty-three, so we're, we're very happy to announce that as well. As for the fair, we have a very exciting and entertaining lineup this year. Uh, we have a lot of, uh, different acts on our main stage, and it's, we're gonna be starting right off the bat. Uh, on Thursday, we have, uh, local blue, bluegrass band Highway Forty-One South, uh, they're gonna be performing on, they're gonna be performing two shows on our main stage. Uh, Friday, we have a, uh, a group Friday and Saturday night, uh, they'll be doing several different performances, but we have a group called Rocklin Road. It's a family group, there, there's, uh, four children and two adults, or two parents. Uh, the dad is, um, he was Paul Martin, and he was the former lead singer of the band Exile. So if you remember, uh, eighties, late eighties, early nineties country, the band Exile, uh, Paul, Paul Martin was their, their, their lead singer. And their mother is the daughter of Dwayne Allen from the Oakridge Boys, so, and her name is Jamie, and they are, they're very, very, very talented, and we're looking forward to that. Uh, on Sunday, we have two concerts, uh, well, we have one concert, which is Rhett Walker. He's gonna be performing at, uh, seven-thirty, but Bayside Worship, uh, they're gonna be coming and opening up for him, uh, ahead of time, so we're, we're really looking forward to that. Uh, on Students' Day, Monday, the sixteenth, uh, we have Circle Christian Arts Academy Dance Troupe, they're gonna be performing twice right there on, in front of the main stage. And then, uh, on Wednesday, our Seniors' Day, uh, Highway Forty-One South will be back, uh, with us again, the Bluegrass Band, they'll be performing three different times on, on Wednesday, which is our, our Seniors' Day. Thursday, we have a nationally known artist, Daily and Vincent, they're, they're very well, very well-known, they have their own TV show, and, and we're excited to, about them. And then on Friday night, we close out our concerts with Vegas McGraw, uh, he'll be performing a tribute, uh, to Tim, to the Tim McGraw Show. So I skipped over Tuesday, but I wanna really make sure everyone's aware, we, we would like to invite everyone to come out as we continue the tradition of honoring our veterans. Uh, that's our, our Veterans Tribute, which will be at seven o'clock, but it's also our Building Stronger Families Free Night to Get In. That's sponsored by Palmetto Build, uh, so it's free to get in. The only thing we ask is for everyone to, uh, bring a canned food, uh, because we are doing a food drive for the, uh, Manatee County Food Bank, uh, or the Food Bank of Manatee County. Uh, last year, we were, we were very blessed with everyone that came, we were, we, uh, they, they donated over eleven-hundred-and-fifty pounds worth of food, and we'd like to, like to try to surpass that this year. Our daily lineup, uh, of entertainment is just as exciting as the main stage acts. We have Circus of Hollywood presenting the show, which is a circus. We have Universal Championship Wrestling this year. Uh, we have the Giraffe Park Menagerie and Zoo, the Hollywood Racing Pigs, uh, the Camel Education Show and, uh, demonstration, as well as camel rides. And then we have local cowboy, Les McDowell, he's gonna have his cowboy camp set up, and they'll, he'll be doing poetry there again. Uh, and then something that's new this year, we, we want to invite everybody to come into our Veterans Hall, and we, where we have a, it's called Playing with Giants Agricultural Edition. So it's a free, uh, farming and ranching-themed game and activity zone for the kids, uh, that's gonna be set up in, uh, in Veterans Hall, and, uh, hopefully, they'll learn a little bit about agriculture while they're playing those games. And then we have three strolling acts of the Plant Guy, Mark Dobson, and Pirate Man Dan with his traveling, uh, pirate ship. So in addition to our, our entertainment lineup, we also have one of the largest four-H and FFA youth livestock shows in the state of Florida. This year, we have seven-hundred-and-eight Manatee County four-H and youth, and FFA youth exhibitors, uh, to, that are gonna be exhibiting livestock, uh, and plants in this year's fair. And this is a, this is a pretty, pretty big increase over last year's numbers. We have sixty-eight beef breeding exhibitors, and they have a hundred-and-ten entries. Uh, their, their actual show started last night. Uh, we do have showmanship, uh, for the beef breeding, that's gonna be tonight. Uh, while there's no charge to, uh, for the gated admission tonight, we do have, uh, them, we have the beef breeding show going on tonight, so if anybody would like to come out and support our youth, uh, they could do that tonight. Uh, we have thirty-eight dairy goats with, uh, sixty-two exhibitors, I'm sorry, thirty, yes, thirty-eight, uh, that, that number's reversed. Uh, thirty-eight dairy goats with sixty-two exhibitors, and then we have six dog exhibitors with twenty-five entries. We had seventeen horse exhibitors, uh, and there was a, a hundred-and-forty-six entries in that with, in, in the twenty-four different classes that they have. Uh, then we have eighty-six FNGLA, you know, which are our plant exhibitors, and they had a hundred-and-fifty-seven entries. And then, to round everything out, we had seventy-eight steer exhibitors with seventy-eight steers, two-hundred-and-twenty-four swine, fifty-four, uh, poultry exhibitors with a hundred-and-fifty-two exit entries, and then sixty-four rabbits with eighty-three entries, uh, sixty-four rabbit exhibitors with eighty-four entries. So we'd like everyone to come out and, uh, support our youth during this year's livestock show, uh, as well as the auctions. This year's, uh, steer sale's gonna be on January fourteenth, which will be this, this Saturday at one o'clock. Uh, the rabbit meat pen will be preceding that, and then the, uh, plant sale will be right after, uh, that'll start at six o'clock. And then our swine sale will be on, uh, January twenty-first at one P M with the poultry meat pen sale immediately following the swine sale. Our Arts and Crafts Department, they received their entries this past weekend, and we're pleased to announce that we received eleven-hundred-and-twenty-eight entries from thirty, uh, four-hundred-and-thirty-two exhibitors. Uh, this year, all of our, all of our four-H and, um, Manatee County School Art is also gonna be in the Arts and Crafts Building, so you can see all of our, all of the art in one location this year, so we're, we're excited about that. We have several contests again this year, we had the Hay Bale Decorating Contest, uh, all the kids came out, uh, Saturday, so we have fifteen bales decorated, make sure you take a look at them. Uh, we have the Sunrise Kiwanis Corn Dog Eating Contest, Spaghetti Eddie's, uh, Spaghetti Eating Contest, the Twenty-Seventh Annual Cheerleading Competition, that's gonna be on Monday, January sixteenth at six o'clock. Uh, we have the barbecue, the Sixteenth Annual Barbecue Contest, that's on Sunday, the twenty-first, uh, and then, I mean, Saturday, the twenty-first, our Hog Calling Contest, if anybody wants to come and enter our Hog Calling Contest, that's at one, at twelve-thirty on the seven, on the twenty-first. Uh, and then we have our Baby Contest, also on the twenty-first, that'll be at noon. And our, our last contest is the Whip-Popping Contest, uh, that's gonna be on, uh, Saturday, January twenty-first, also at noon. Uh, oh, and I forgot, the, this, the, I didn't forget, I just didn't, I skipped over. On, on the twenty-first, at five P M, uh, we need everybody to come out and, uh, cheer on our firefighters versus our Sheriff's Department in the Manatee County, uh, Annual Peaches Donut Eating Contest. It's a, it's, it's, it's a sight to see. Uh, it, it was, that's, that's a, that's a big crowd pleaser. Um, and it, and as always, we have, uh, Bell City providing the wonderful, wonderful midway, and last but not least, food, lots and lots of food. Uh, you name a food, and we, we have it there. So to see an exciting, or, to see our exciting lineup and our special pricing days, please visit our website, manateecountyfair.com, uh, and, uh, please help us thank our sponsors by, uh, patronizing their businesses and visiting their links that are also available, uh, available on our website. Uh, and lastly, in, in consideration of our current economy, we wanna make sure that everyone's aware, we did not increase, increase any ticket prices or, uh, parking prices this year. So our daily admission remains ten dollars for adults, six dollars for active-duty military, six dollars for children, children five and under are free, and then our parking is ten dollars. So in closing, we invite everyone to come out to the fair, January twelfth through the twenty-second, and we believe you'll agree, what a sight to see in twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
Wonderful. Look forward to the fair every single year. I wonder how many people make a New Year's resolution to start their diet at the New Year and then come the fair, fall off the wagon? It's probably about fifty percent derailment, yeah, that's what I would assume. Okay, let's get on to Employee of the Year. Where is Billy?
Billy, Billy?
There he is, hiding in the crowd inconspicuously.
Trying to.
Commissioner Bearden, you have the Employee of the Year proclamation, sir.
Proclamation, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas, the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, has expressed and acknowledged its appreciation for the dedicated efforts of county employees through programs such as the Employee of the Month Program, and whereas, the Board of County Commissioners wishes to further acknowledge and recognize the outstanding and superior efforts and contributions of county employees through the designation of an Employee of the Year selected from among those persons honored as Employees of the Month during the calendar year, and whereas, Billy Koch, who has been employed by the county since March fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, and is currently a Utilities Maintenance Supervisor with the Utilities Department, has been selected as Employee of the Year for twenty twenty-two. Due to the many and varied contribution he has made to the Manatee County Government, now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that January tenth, twenty twenty-three shall be known and designated and set aside as Billy Koch Day in Manatee County, Florida, an acknowledgement of his selection as Employee of the Year and his dedication to providing the most responsible and efficient services to Manatee County Government, specifically, and to the citizens of our community in general. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this tenth day of January twenty twenty-three, signed, Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a motion on the floor to adopt January tenth, twenty twenty-three as Billy Koch Day in Manatee County. Motion by Commissioner Ron, second by Commissioner Van Austin Bridge. Uh, we'll go ahead and hold the vote now. Commissioner Cruz stepped away, so you have to wrap it up without him.
We'll sacrifice.
All right, so the motion passes by a vote of... Okay, we'll mark you as a yes, Commissioner Thatcher, so it passes by a vote of six to zero with Commissioner Cruz absent, who will probably come running in the door now screaming that he's a yes.
He's gonna be yelling.
Okay, he's a yes, okay. The, the vote passes by, by a vote of seven to zero. The floor is yours, sir.
Speak.
Well, I'm, I'm gonna introduce Mr. Koch briefly, if I could.
Sure.
So, first of all, congratulations, Billy. Uh, we have a number of representatives from utilities here today, uh, and one of the things that's somewhat unique about, uh, about Billy is he was nominated by his team. It's fairly unusual for his, uh, direct reports to put in a nomination for Employee of the Month, which led ultimately to being selected for Employee of the Year. Uh, as was mentioned, he's been with the county since March twenty sixteen. Uh, prior to that, he was a Platoon Sergeant in the U S Marine Corps from twen- two thousand and one to... From two thousand and one to two thousand and five. And Billy is really just one example of the dedicated, hardworking, talented, uh, employees who we have throughout the- who we have throughout the county, especially in Utilities Department. And the work that we do in utilities is often unnoticed. So that's why I'm particularly excited that Billy is being recognized as Employee of the Year this year. And I do want to thank him for setting an example for all of us to emulate as dedicated and hardworking public servants that really do... I have to say that the county, both the government and residents, are lucky to have people like Billy working for us. And I will introduce and turn this over to Nick Wagner, his direct supervisor, who has a few more words as well. Apologies. I'm Evan Pilichowski. I'm the Utilities Director for Manatee County.
Hello, I'm Nick Wagner. I did not realize I was speaking today, but that's okay. Billy is a fantastic person. He's a great person to have on your team. He's a wonderful example, like Evan said, for everybody within our group. As you can see, we had a heck of a turnout for the utilities support. There were many more that wanted to come support Billy because he's just such a great leader. We just, obviously, we had to keep business running, so we couldn't bring everybody. We're very lucky to have him as our crew leader. His team that nominated him is actually here behind him in blue. They're very thankful to have him as part of their group, and he does an outstanding job for everybody. And just couldn't have picked a better person to be the Employee of the Year for Manatee County. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Now for the man of the hour.
Yeah, just kind of piggyback on everyone else's saying is, you know, we got a ton of tremendous people working for the county. I know, especially, I'm a little partial to my own team. You know, distribution, collections, meter department, everybody over there is doing a killer job. So it's an honor to be the face for utilities for a little while, and I'm truly blessed to have such a support team. So, thank you.
Commissioner Baugh and Commissioner Ron are on the board.
Yeah, Billy, I've got to tell you, I've been here 10 years, and that's quite an honor that you've received, and it's well deserved. And I remember when you came before as an Employee of the Month, there was no doubt that you were probably going to win, in all honesty. But I do want to say, you know, you've done such a great job for us, for Manatee County, for the citizens, and you're only as good as a leader as the employees that you work with. And they can either make you or break you, and I think you said something to that effect when you were here before us before, and that kind of resonated with me. So I just want you to know that I'm very proud of you. Congratulations, and I look forward to what we will see of you in the future. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sergeant Koch, thank you so much for your service as a fellow Marine. I know Staff Sergeant Bearden will feel the same way. Thank you so much for what you've done. I'm sure probably running the Utilities Department in your unit there is a little different than running a Marine Corps unit, but thank you again for your service. Congratulations. We're very proud of you, and Semper Fi.
Congratulations again, as Commissioner Ron said. I really appreciate everything that you've done in the county and continuing to uphold the tradition of excellence that we all have been instilled into us and really leading. It's another example of Marines taking charge and carrying out the plan of the day, and you seem to do that. So thank you again so much for everything.
And Dr. Hopes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. And Billy, congratulations. And one of the things that Evan mentioned, and it's so true, that, you know, the citizens take a lot for granted, that when you turn the faucet on, clean water comes out, and when you flush your toilet, dirty water goes away. And one of the things that this team did during the last New Year's weekend is they made sure that water still flowed to the north of the river. And they worked tirelessly and continue to work on that issue. And so really, it's a great recognition for the Utilities Department and all the work that you do that matters every day. Thank you.
Mr. Koch, thank you for your service to our country and thank you for your service to this county, sir. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, next on our list today is... It's either Angelita Ortiz, or I'm mispronouncing that. He is giving him this proclamation right now. He's after. Number three is Retirement Award for Angelina Ortiz. She's retiring from the Ag Extension Program, and I'm probably mispronouncing her name.
Angelita.
Angelita, okay. Angelita Ortiz. She's retiring from Ag Extension.
Good morning, Chair and Board. I'm Lisa Hickey, and I'm the Interim Extension Director out at Ag and Extension Services. I've worked with Angelita for the last 16 of her 17 years. So we have a lot of history, a lot of adjectives I could come up with that describe her from passion to compassion, a joyous individual, a hardworking individual, and very devoted. She coordinates some of the effort that we have with 4H Camp, Summer Camp, and I have seen her soothe children that are homesick, being away from their parents for the first time, trying to do camp. I have seen her work late hours on the weekends, after hours, during the week, and she is just very much loves her job. So I know one thing, she's going to miss it when she leaves, but I know she's going to embrace where she's going through retirement. So I'm going to welcome Alex Draper, who is her supervisor, to give a few words, and then we'll give her award.
Hi, everyone. My name's Alexandra Draper, and I'm the 4H Youth Development Agent for Manatee County. The 4H program sees about 4,000 youth per year for episodic programs to teach them hands-on learning activities, and then we have another 350 members that participate in our community club programs throughout the year and do more intensive projects. And Angelita has been with the 4H program in Manatee County for 17 years, and she's done an incredible job getting youth involved in the program, teaching them leadership skills, and she's worn many different hats throughout that program, from our Ag Venture Program to taking youth to the Day at the Capitol, which takes them up to Tallahassee and introduces them to state-level government, to, like Lisa pointed out, all of the camping programs that she's helped to coordinate and take youth to have their first outdoor experiences away from their family. I'd like to say that her greatest passion, though, is teaching youth public speaking skills and building their confidence to be able to take on leadership roles. She's active in the Toastmasters Program, and she's taken those skills and brought them to our county-level youth council, as well as coordinated the public speaking program that 4H puts on every year with the assistance of Bradenton Kiwanis as well as FPL. And she's really allowed some of these youth to come out of their shell and taught them that it's okay to be afraid, but they can do it, and they can communicate how awesome their experiences in the program have been to the public. I really appreciate that. I've only been here for seven months, so I've only had the opportunity to know Angelita for seven months, but in that seven months, she has helped me to become acquainted to the program in a way that's made sure that we'll be able to carry on the 4H legacy in Manatee County after she leaves. And I really sincerely hope that she enjoys her retirement and all the adventures she has planned for once she leaves. Angelita?
Thank you for all those allegations. Before the award, I want to thank you, the Board of County Commissioners. Thanks to the partnership that you have with the University of Florida and the county, I'm a product of that. I came in thinking that I was going to be working here in the main building and everything, and sure enough, I came from the private sector, and I ended up working in an agricultural sector. I was born in a farm, but I was taken out of there and brought to New York City, so I lost all my country. But 4H brought all that back to me. So I want to thank everyone, my fellow coworkers, thank you for all those words, kind words, for being there, especially the extension, for being there where we need the help. We rely a lot on the community and the volunteers to carry this program. When you go to see the booth, you're going to see all the work that these kids do, and we... The University of Florida provides a curriculum and resources, and you, the county commissioner, provide me and the staff to help them conduct all those programs. 17 years ago, private sector, okay, I wrote all that. We have a pledge in 4H, and I am going to change one because we open all the clubs, open their meetings with a 4H pledge. I'm going to close this stage of my life with a pledge. I only going to change, when I say family, the word is club, all right? And again, thank you, everyone. I'm going to miss it, but I am happy for the life that I have touched and seeing the youth that are now having their own kids and getting married. That's when you know, oh, my gosh, I'm getting old, it's time to move on. And this is the pledge that we say every club. I pledge my head to clearer thinking. I pledge my heart to greater loyalty. I pledge my hands to larger service. I pledge my health to better living. For my family, that will be club. So this way is for my family, my community, and my world. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Commissioner Baugh.
Angelina?
Yes.
Angelita.
Angelita.
Okay. I just wanted to say thank you for your service to this great county that we have the pleasure of living in. You know what? It's people like you that make Manatee County what it is today. And I can tell you that 10 years ago, or 11 years ago now, when I first got elected, I had the honor of sitting on the board, and it was wonderful. I learned so much about the rural area and our kids and the fair, and so it's just a great organization that you've been involved with. So thank you for your service. I look forward to hearing about your retirement, but you know, if you'd ever like to come back, let us know.
I'll be present. There's a lot of work that can be done outside. You can still come and help, volunteer, and I hope that I'm be able to do that. But again, thank you for your support in keeping us, the extension and everything, in your budgets and everything, because we are, this is a great place. I recommend everybody here, 4H, FFA. If you have any grandchildren, five to 18 years old, input them in this program. The valuable skill that they learn, and you can see all that at the animal exhibits, at the showmanship, and at the club, the artistic, all the talent from agricultural to sciences, to the present, to technology. Go and see, and they is hands-on, different from scouting and other programs. This is actually life skill that they are learning. This gives, buy this animal, they have to take care of them, they have to follow guidelines. So they are better prepared to go to college or start their own business because of the skill that they have learned at 4H. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Satcher.
I just wanted to echo and say thank you so much for your service. I got to come out to y'all's event for, I believe it was for third graders a couple of weeks ago. And, boy, I was so surprised, or just impressed, I guess is the right word, see so many kids there, so engaged in learning, finding out about our farms and bees and, you know, just every single station that you had going, and y'all were doing a great job running things. Didn't seem, I don't know how many, you can have that many kids in one place and it not seem chaotic. It was very impressive. And so your passion for youth and our children and raising them up is just evident for all to see, and I wanted to thank you for your service.
That was adventure that you're describing. Again, all this program take ample time, a lot of staff work and a lot of volunteer work, and then the sponsors that are there to showcase. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your beautiful words today, and thank you so much for your service to Manatee County, and we wish you a great retirement.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, next is Commissioner James Satcher. The adoption and presentation of a proclamation designating January 22 through 28 of 2023 as National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week. I think Hopes put this on here, just make us say that over and over.
I was going through that pronunciation before. We'll see how I do. Do we have anyone here that's receiving this particular award? Come forward. I'm up here. A great crowd. They're all awake, so they're not doing their job right now, but that's okay. All right. So proclamation from the Board of County Commissioners, Manatee County, Florida. Whereas certified registered nurse anesthetists are advanced practice registered nurses, providing anesthesia care to patients in the United States for more than 150 years. CRNAs are among the nation's most trusted professionals, and whereas CRNAs are the primary anesthesia providers in rural communities and continue to be the primary providers of anesthesia care to U.S. military personnel, and whereas CRNAs practice in every setting in which anesthesia is delivered, from traditional hospital surgical suites and obstetrical delivery rooms to critical access hospitals, from ambulatory surgical centers to the offices of dentists, podiatrists, and ophthalmologists, and whereas CRNAs are qualified to make independent judgments regarding all aspects of anesthesia care based on their education, training, and licensure, and whereas CRNAs have courageously served on the front lines of the ongoing coronavirus pandemic, using their advanced skills in airway management, intubation, and ventilator management to care for the sickest patients. Now therefore be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners of Manatee County, Florida, that January 22nd through 28th, 2023 shall be known, designated, and set aside as National CRNA Week in Manatee County, Florida. Adopted with a quorum present and voting this 10th day of January 2023, signed by our chair and attested to by Angel Colonesso, the clerk of the Circuit Court. Thank you all so much for being here. Who's taking this?
Thank you so much.
All right, I'm going to give you this, and then the floor is yours.
Thank you so much. I did not realize I would be speaking today, but I want to thank you for recognizing certified registered nurse anesthetists in Manatee County. My name is Michelle Canaly. I'm the president of the Florida Association of Nurse Anesthesiology, and we are the professional organization representing the 5,000 certified registered nurse anesthetists that provide anesthesia services in the state of Florida. Nationally, there are 60,000 certified registered nurse anesthetists, and we provide a majority of the anesthesia in this country and 100% of anesthesia in rural communities. If it were not for certified registered nurse anesthetists, there would not be access to anesthesia care and therefore surgical care and labor and delivery pain management in this country. We are, we serve in the military, and we are the only anesthesia provider that is deployed in forward operating systems to treat soldiers in combat. We were the original anesthesia experts, providing anesthesia for more than 150 years, and we are found in every setting that anesthesia services are provided. So if you've ever had a colonoscopy or a surgery, or you've had a baby, chances are a certified registered nurse anesthetist provided your anesthesia care. We are 100% board certified, and I'm very proud and passionate about this profession, and I want to thank these CRNAs who are here with me today. They are all from Manatee County, and they're providing anesthesia to your constituents in this community. So thank you so much for recognizing us. Thank you.
Thank you. I was worried your speech was going to put us to sleep, but you did great. You have to throw a punny joke in there, right, at some point? But yeah, this board always likes to recognize people who are frontline workers, especially in the healthcare industry, who are serving and helping the people of this county. So thank you all so much for coming down, and thank you for everything that you do on a daily basis for our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do you mind if we get a picture?
You want to get a picture? I have a photographer handy.
Okay, that's great.
No, James, definitely not. He'll get it with this, that way the seal is on the podium, so you'll get the seal in front of you as well. There we go.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Okay, we're going to move on to citizen comments on... No, I'm sorry. Oh, we have to vote on the proclamation. I forgot. So we'll do that now. We'll vote on the proclamation. The motion, Madam Clerk, was made by Commissioner Ron and seconded by Van Austin Bridge, and the motion is to approve National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week. And the motion is to approve National Certified Registered Nurse Anesthetist Week. Commissioner Satcher, you have to cast your vote real quick. You're the, just getting up here. And then what we'll do in the future is we'll, we'll do all the proclamations together as one motion. Okay, so the motion passes by a vote of seven to zero. All right. So then we'll move on to citizen comments on future agenda items. We have a 30-minute time slot set aside for this. And if we exceed that, what we'll do is we'll go, at the end of the meeting, we will continue that, that portion. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on an item that is not on today's agenda, but either they want to appear on a future agenda or is likely to appear on a future agenda? Okay, so. I don't have, I have three people signed up. I apologize. I'm not accustomed to people going with the rules here. So we have Robert Lesher. After Robert is Katie Sammets, and then Shannon Keever. So we'll go Robert, Katie, Shannon. That'll be the order to start off. Sir, so you have three minutes to speak. When you start, please start by stating your first name, your last name, and your county of residence.
Good morning. My name is Robert Lesher. I am in Manatee County. I have a few items I'd like to discuss. One of them was reminded, was reminded to me when I drove over here. At the intersection, when you come across the Green Bridge, Green Bridge and turn onto Route 64, Manatee Avenue, there's two turning lanes. I almost got, I don't come over here more than a couple of times a month, but I almost got wiped out twice when you use the inside, or the outside lane. The inside people, you know, they don't realize, I think it would help if you had an arrow, like up, you know, you know, I know there's lines on the street, but I don't know, for some reason, people just, they come in the inside lane and sort of come out. That's not really why I came here, but I was reminded of it, and I thought it would make it a lot safer just to, you know, an hour there that people would realize it. And the second item is, I know everybody, I won't say everybody, a lot of people are really pleased to have a very conservative Republican board, pretty much. And I think as a Republican board, you should try to follow the Republican values, which is less government. I had send each commissioner an email about an issue about the Kaukiuna Beach taking it over. I really would like to see the government stick to the, the business of the government, not really to get involved. And thank you for the few of you that did return a comment on my email. I appreciate it. Anyway, I would like to know what you were, if anything, you have done about trying to get a private individual to take it over. And I would like to know, like, how someone would get the information to do that, that we don't end up, you know, running it for years. Because a lot of stuff is just temporary, and it ends up, like these temporary taxes, they never go away. And I, I would really like to see, you know, our, our commission do something to try to get any business that does not involve the government to, you know, try to end it. You know, whether it's quick or immediately, you know? And like I said, I, I just don't, and I think most people that voted to get the newly commissioners elected feel the same way I do. So that's one of the main issues that I wanted to speak on. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Katie Sammets? Hope I'm pronouncing it right?
I thought maybe separating them would make it easier to pronounce, so. For the record, Katie Danny He Sammets, Manatee County. And there's quite a few. The clock started? Okay, perfect. Quite a few things I would like to see come up on future agenda items. To start, is there, oh, man, there's a lot to start on. Hold on, I got all my notes here. So let's say it's nice to see you. Y'all must have missed us. It's been, it's been crazy to watch on the sidelines. I guess I'll just jump into it. So noticing on the last meeting on the, on the 5th, I think it was, quite a lot came up that I felt personally wasn't a priority, shouldn't be a priority. For instance, the Confederate statue being reinstated, the sanctuary city for guns, and the privacy agreement for Manatee County employees. Y'all, y'all are aware that, like, antisemitism is on the rise, right? And, and people in, in your districts are being, you know, victimized for that. Are your, it, it seems that all of these culture wars are being brought up to distract from something. And whether it is, you know, reallocating county funds into somebody's private business, or, or 501(c)(3), or trying to do backroom deals that'll benefit the developers that put you in seats. The county deserves better. Instead of doing a privacy agreement, what about a transparency agreement? I noticed when I signed up today, actually, that there was new agreements for public, you know, comments that we're not going to, to, to attack personally, and we're going to, it was like a, it was like your, your civics. I don't see it posted anywhere in here. It used to be right up here, your ethics code of conduct. I'm not sure why that's not in here anymore. Is that still in here? Is that still, is that still something that y'all abide by? I know you all get along now. Let's see. Confederate, oh, is using county cars for personal use something you're allowed to do? I don't, and I know you can't answer me, but that was something that was brought up. And the puppy mill ban. Hmm, okay. So, so from what we understand, there are two commissioners, since we can't attack, attack personally. But there are two commissioners that got direct maximum contributions from the owners of Petland, and.
That's an agenda item today.
It is an agenda item.
Yes, ma'am. 61?
When was it put on the agenda?
Friday last week, I believe.
What time of day? That's crazy. I felt like I checked it early afternoon. Friday of last week. Can we get, can we put something on the agenda that will set a timeline for when you can add things to the agenda so that the public is, is well-informed, able to come in? Because I had to take off work to come in today. I'm sure if more people knew that that had been added before the end of Friday, you would have an actual, you would have more of your constituents here to listen to, whether or not they donated to you or you returned their payment. Did, did you find out what time, though? I know my time's up, but did you?
Thank you, ma'am.
You can't answer what time that was put on the agenda?
Thank you, ma'am. Shannon Keever?
Good morning. My name is Shannon Keever. I am with Women's Voices of Southwest Florida, and.
What's your county of residence, ma'am?
Manatee County. I live right here in Bradenton. So what time was that put on the agenda last week? Then, can you look at that? The Petland? But you did, just a minute ago. So anyways. Mike Ron, suggesting that you all sign a confidentiality agreement in a time when there is so little trust in the majority of you. Only goes to tell your constituents that you want to hide more from us. Vanessa Ba, after having settled an ethics complaint and agreeing that she wants more secrecy from us, your constituents, is reprehensible. I second Ms. Danny He Sammets's suggestion that we have you all, instead of signing a confidentiality agreement, sign a transparency agreement. Anything that you are doing, I mean, if you had people disclosing locations of, say, domestic violence shelters, which would be a safety issue, anything that you guys are doing other than things that are for public safety, should be 100% open and transparent with us. There should be absolutely nothing you guys are doing behind closed doors. It makes us feel like there might be a quid pro quo. I'll teach you guys what a quid pro quo is later, okay, guys? Rather than serving your constituents. It's disgusting. Why do you think it's of local government necessity and urgency to be suggesting things such as a, as overturning the Petland ordinance, which was incredibly popular amongst your constituents? Such as creating really a sanctuary city for guns? I mean, we have gun laws. Yeah, you think it's funny.
Look at him, he's laughing.
It's not funny. You guys think this is a joke. Your job is so important to the people of this county. My children come here with me to these meetings, they're homeschooled. You guys are giving them a great education on government civics, but still, this is ridiculous. Overturning the monument? You guys can't even make that decision. It would have to be the daughters of the Confederacy who's, who's going to pay for that, to put that up. Why would you guys make that part of your platform? You think it's funny, too? I mean, why are you guys standing there laughing at me? This isn't funny. What you guys should be focusing on is traffic.
Thank you, ma'am.
And a whole lot of other things.
Okay. Those are the people that I had signed up, but is there anyone else who would like to come forward? So just sort of in an orderly fashion, organize yourselves and come forward if you'd like to speak. You have three minutes. When you get to the podium, please state your first name, your last name, and your county of residence. Ma'am?
Something a little bit different, but I do think that there's some things that do need to be stated in here because, you know, we're talking about government and what government should be and should not be allowed to do. But I recall our government up here trying to mask us and put a curfew on us. I didn't see all these people coming in here worried about that. So why are we here now over a Confederate monument? And by the way, if I need to raise money to erect that monument myself, trust me, I will do it. Now, with that being said, I would like to take a moment, and it's kind of funny because this was part of the thing. I was going to keep to a, a, a letter, by the way, you know? Keep it all nice and, and, and worked. But I'd like to take a moment to speak, and it kind of goes in with this, about what we went through, through the COVID lockdowns. We, Manatee County, came out in force and denounced what we were seeing taking place here in Manatee County. We rose up, we fought hard. We clearly knew this time of, this time, our leadership was truly poor, poor. Each of you sitting on the dais are a result of those poor decisions that were here during those COVID lockdowns, every one of you. Manatee County had enough of the tyranny here. Okay? There was only one commissioner on this dais that stood, that stood, stood up with the people of this county and said enough, and she is here today. Vanessa, I want to thank you for that. Thank you so much. Because you are the voice of us here on this dais. When nobody here was fighting for us, nobody here, and now we're talking about a monument, okay? A monument. A monument that should never have been brought down, a monument that is of our history. You cannot remove our history. It was an ugly world back then, and it crossed across the U.S., United States of America. Every person from that era would have, was a slave owner. There was not one person in our history during that era that did not own slaves. And I beg the people that sit here and want to destroy our history, I'd beg them to explain to me that. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Okay. So let's not have dialogue within the audience. Ma'am, please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Shannon Spring. I'm in Manatee County. And I just wanted to say what an unfortunate experience it has been here this morning, my first time meeting all of you. I've been watching your faces. I've been watching your lack of eye contact. I've been watching smirks. Most of you can't look at me right now while I'm speaking, and we even have a Marine on the board. The Marine is making eye contact, so that's nice to see that that life skill of respect has stayed with you, sir. I wonder, though, how I should explain to the many students that I teach what your decision is about voting against kindness to animals. If I can ask people to please quiet down. I teach kindness to animals. I teach kids about government and ethics. And I did take pictures of your faces during this meeting so that I could show them to them later. Because I, I talk to them about how to advocate for other people, including themselves. Jason, you smirk so much, I just, I'm surprised that your face isn't stuck like that.
Ms. Ms. Spring?
It's shocking. Thank you, sir. So the reason that I'm here.
Ms. Spring?
I, I'm, I have moved on from my comment, Kevin, so please allow me to speak and not interrupt me. Okay? So I'm here today, I am here today to ask you not to rescind the Petland ordinance.
That's an agenda item, it's not a future agenda item.
And I'm also asking you to please not open, I pray to God every day myself, but don't open a government meeting with a prayer from a Baptist preacher. That's inappropriate. Yeah, that is serious. I pray to God every day, but there should not be a Baptist preacher opening the meeting. In addition to the fact that when you have people from your county here to talk about important items, you should be able to conduct yourselves in a professional manner. I've not seen any of that happening this morning. I saw giggles and smiles and smirks.
Ma'am, I'm looking for a future agenda item soon.
The Petland ordinance.
That's an agenda item for today. That is not a future agenda item. It's on the agenda today.
So you didn't put it on the agenda until Friday afternoon?
It's on the agenda. Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Thank you.
So thank you. I just would like to get, before I sit down, just another quick picture. If everybody could smile and say puppy mills?
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you so much.
Step away from the podium, please.
I will report back to my students' experience today.
Step away from the podium, please.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Hi, ma'am. Please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on a, on a future agenda item. Hey, folks in the audience?
I live in Sarasota County.
Don't. Thank you, ma'am. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Thank you for listening to me. I hope you'll take this to heart. I am an atheist. I also believe in separation of church and state. I believe a prayer has no place in a, in a public building, opening a meeting. I'm not against prayer. I'm not against those who follow any religion, but I am against the outcome when you mix religion with politics and when you legislate based on religion. And I do not think we need to need, we need to have a prayer. I think that's against separation of church and state. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir?
Yes.
When you get to the podium, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
I'm not sure if I'm here at the right time, but I do have a complaint.
Okay.
Can I talk?
Sure.
Okay. Can you read this first before I start talking?
I'm sorry?
Can you read this before I start talking?
You could read it to us, but I can't, it's too small for us to read. We can try and get them to zoom in on it, and maybe we'll read it as you go. But I need you to state your first and last name.
Oh, my name is Vito DeMonte. I've been here before, sir.
I remember you. Yeah, you have a code enforcement.
Thank you very much that you remember.
You have a code enforcement issue, as I recall.
But this is about the law that you guys make.
Okay.
That's why I want you to read it.
Put it back down, they zoomed in, and I think we can see it now.
I don't want to read it. Maybe you don't understand my language.
It's okay. Okay, so go ahead and state your, your concern, though, if you would.
If you guys agree with this law, then you guys tell me, how can you change rules as you go along? Because I have these other rules here. This is what you, the people that you hire, that they work for you, and then they work for us. Okay? Tell me, how many things are wrong in this place here? None of this has been downright from the beginning at my house, sir. You could take it step by step. And you know, I don't see why I should be here complaining about, I just bought a house. 2019, see, I'm going crazy. You guys are driving me crazy. And you know what? Someday, somebody is going to go real crazy, and you guys are going to pay the price. I hope not. But, you see, as a crazy person right now, I can't think right. So you're going to have to give me a little extra time, right, Mr. Ram? You agree with that or not? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
But what I'm trying to say, 2019, I bought a house. I didn't buy a job with the house to come here and complain to you every single day or every whatever. Anyway, see, I'm getting out of hand. My thing is, from day one, I bought the house. I didn't buy this problem. This problem should have been taken care of it before I bought the house. I'm not going to hire a lawyer because you guys mess up. And I don't mean personally. The people that you doing the work for us mess up, like code enforcement. Code enforcement, the very first time I went there, then my house, my, my yard flooded, that was 2000, January or February. From January, it took over one year, over one year, didn't do damn thing about it. Can I say that? I'm sorry. So tell me, how do you see that right? That code enforcer, the very last time that they came over, the guy told me, I talked to the lady, and the lady. to the lady, and the lady says she didn't put the dirt there. Jesus Christ, I never know that dirt comes from God down on the, on the swale. How can you accept an answer like that? Tell me.
Okay.
I know the beep was beeping, but it's been three years, do I get an extra time?
Yes, so Dr. Hopes, sir, Dr. Hopes and his staff are gonna come down and speak to you now, and they will help to resolve your issue, okay?
It's unbelievable. You guys, I mean, I mean, you guys should be ashamed.
We're directing staff down there to help you now, sir. Thank you.
I never choose this job.
Sir, sir, we-
Never choose this job.
I understand your frustration, sir. We're gonna help you right now.
Do I have a lawyer in here?
Okay. Probably six, probably six of them, but, uh-
Maybe ten.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Parker, and I am a resident of Sarasota County, however, our C4 is technically in Manatee, so hello. How are you guys?
Sir, sir.
You're gonna pause my time?
She has her floor. She has the floor.
I want four seconds left.
That's okay. Yeah, go ahead and start the timer. Vicki, go ahead and start her timer now for three minutes.
All right, cool, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Sarah Parker. I am a Sarasota County resident. A lot of you guys already know me. Um, I want to first off, start off by saying I don't like being played. I know when someone's holding onto red meat, and all of you chose to throw in red meat all during that meeting because you're hiding something. Now, something we did last year was, as we're gonna start pulling your phone records again and your emails every damn day, and it's not just gonna be us, like, it's not. We are now spread out across Florida, thanks to you guys. I really do want to thank you guys. It would not have been for all of you on this board, we wouldn't be a, a recognized national organization, we would not have got invited to the White House, so thank you. So, let me go into the future agenda item. Y'all know why I'm here. The Confederate statue. I'm gonna, I'm, if you guys don't know, and I've said it before, I'm a big history buff. I love history. My family's been here since 1697. My family fought in every war, including the Civil War, okay? Historically, no one has resurrected a statue of their enemies. Historically, did, did Henry VIII resurrect a statue for King Fran, for the King of France? Did Mehmed resurrect a statue for Vladrakula? And that, the Ottoman Empire, if you don't know about it, was one of the biggest empires in all the history of the world. Why are we resurrecting, not just keeping up? Why are we resurrecting a statue that almost divided and destroyed this country? Why? That does not make any sense. And as someone that has, I don't, and I got, I did it, Commissioner Ball, saying, well, we'll put up another thing. So, we're gonna spend more, more money to put up, what, a small plaque? Well, slavery was bad, but we're gonna honor everyone that did this? No. And yes, it was about taxes. I don't care what it was about. At the end of the day, they went and they tried to succeed from the United States of America, and they lost. And thousands and thousands of people were murdered on both sides for a war that was fought over money and, and a, and a big government. It wasn't the people, you're right, it wasn't the Confederate soldiers. It wasn't. They were being, they were fighting over money. It wasn't about slavery, it wasn't. But what we're not gonna go do is honor the people that killed. We're not gonna honor the people that led the armies that killed and destroyed. Little, little fact that you know, in South Carolina, when all of the farmers and plantation owners left, the slaves that they had kept up with that land. And after the Civil War, even though they kept up with the land, they're the ones that took care of that land. That land was returned back to the slave owners, and they were forced to share crop. Actually, let's even go further, you want to talk about history? My family, my, my family had to run, because one of my, one of my great-great uncles shot a sharecropper. He was tired. He was getting beaten every day, and his family wasn't surviving. That's how we made it up north. This is, this is a slap in the face. It's a complete slap in the face of your constituents and of your community, and there's so many things you guys can be working on. Do you know how many emails we get that are people that don't have housing? Do you know how many emails we get that there's children that need things? Like, I mean that. And they don't, they don't email you guys anymore because you don't do anything. When are y'all going to grow up? I don't want to be here.
Thank you, ma'am. So, is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on a future agenda item at this time? Okay, we're gonna close citizen comment on future agenda items, and we're gonna move into the consent agenda. We will vote on the consent as a whole first, and then we will address the items that were pulled. So, we're gonna entertain motions to approve consent, well, actually, let's do citizen comment on consent first, and then we'll, so that way, Leslie, you can draw up the motion. It will be minus items 40, 41, and 42. So, let's open these, this up to citizen comment on consent agenda. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on today's consent agenda? Ma'am, first name, last name, county of residence, you'll have three minutes.
Sure. Andrew Griffin, Manatee County, and there's only one item that I really would like to get some information on if you guys would entertain, and it's the reduction code enforcement fine. It's number 45 for Anthony and Rosalie Helmer. I'd like to hear some details on that, and, you know, I'm kind of, you know, with these code enforcements, I know they can get very costly, so if we can do anything to help this family, I'd, I'd greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on consent agenda today? Okay. Seeing none, seeing none. Ma'am, let's go ahead and pull up, okay, let's go ahead and pull up consent minus 40, 41, and 42. Okay, I'll verbally entertain motions on consent minus 40, 41, and 42.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Cruz to approve consent minus 40, 41, and 42, and a second by Commissioner Baugh. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Madam Clerk, consent minus those three items passes unanimously. We're now gonna open up items 40, 41, and 42 together, and I will turn the floor over to Commissioner Ballard as these were her items.
Thank you, Chair. I just actually wanted to highlight the, the core program for the benefit of the public. This is a really exciting opportunity that Manatee County has the opportunity to be a part of. So, the core program is something that the state of Florida has put into place. Manatee County is one of the first counties that has been chosen to be a part of the, the core program. So, it is a, the Coordinated Opiate Recovery Program, and what, what it's able to do is we're able to provide some additional resources for treatment, for medication-assisted treatment. We are able to get some grant funding into place, and I'm really excited about this for anybody who has followed me or knows, knows anything about my passions. I'm, I'm truly passionate about addiction recovery and making sure that people in our community who are suffering through this opioid crisis are able to, to, to get the treatment that they need, especially because it has affected so many children in our community. So, I'm, I'm just excited that this is something that, that our county has, has the ability to be part of. We are really gonna continue highlighting this. We're not just gonna rest on our laurels and say, oh, now we have some additional money from the state. This is something that's gonna be a, a focus of mine over, over the next few years, and, I just wanted everybody to, to be aware that this is something that Manatee County has been chosen to be a part of, and, and we're really gonna continue pushing addiction recovery. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Would you like to make a motion at this? Oh, motion has been made, I apologize. So, we have a motion by Commissioner Ron, seconded by Commissioner Baugh to approve items 40, 41, and 42. We'll hold public comment at this time. Is there anyone who would like to come forward at this time to speak on items 40, 41, and 42 on today's consent agenda?
I do see that we have Mr. Crutchfield here. I don't know if there's anything he wanted to say, but-
Mr. Crutchfield, would you like to come forward and speak on any of these items? You're not obligated, we're just wondering if you're itching to get to the podium. Okay, thank you, sir. So, then, we'll go to citizen comment. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on either of these three items? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close citizen comment. Commissioners, cast your votes on voting on these items together at this time. So, only 40 was up there. I did want to vote on all of them together. No worries, we'll do three at a time then, or we'll do, we'll do three separately. So, item number 40 passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, by a vote of seven to zero. I'll take a verbal motion for item number 41.
So, moved.
We voted.
We only had 40. So, again, I'll take a verbal motion on 41.
Moved, pass for number 41.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Satcher and a second by Commissioner Baugh. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Passes unanimously. Unanimously, I'll take a verbal on 42.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Ballard, seconded by Commissioner Satcher. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Madam Clerk, 42 passes unanimously as well. All right, then, we're gonna move forward to item number 56, and we're gonna move sort of quickly here. Item number 56, you can go ahead and put it on the board for us. It is adoption of a resol, of Resolution R-22 dash, excuse me, R-23 dash 001 vacating a portion of platted access easement located at 619 Palm Avenue in Ellington, Florida, 34222 in District 2. We'll entertain motions at this time. We have a motion by Commissioner Ballard to approve, a second by Commissioner Baugh. We'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number 56, the vacation of this platted easement? Okay, seeing no one, we're gonna close public comment. Commissioners, you can cast your votes now. Madam Clerk, item number 56 passes unanimously. We go ahead and put 57 on the board. Item number 57 is an adoption of Resolution R-23 dash 004 vacating a platted alleyway located at 3511 16th Avenue East in Palmetto, Florida, 34221, as recorded in the Palmetto Grove and Garden Platte. This is in District 2. We have a motion on the board to approve by Commissioner Baugh, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We'll open this item up to public comment at this time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on this item, number 57? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, you can cast your votes at this time. And it passes by a vote of six. Well, Commissioner Ballard, you're not allowed to abstain, you have to vote. How, how do you vote, ma'am? Okay, Commissioner Ballard, Ballard votes aye, so it passes by a vote of seven to zero. All right, moving on to item number 58, which is consideration and approval of the county commission's 2023 legislative priorities. We can go ahead and put that on the board. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baugh, and that's been seconded by Commissioner Satcher. We'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number 58? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, you go ahead and cast your votes at this time. And it passes by a vote of seven to zero. Moving on to item number 59, which is through financial management. This is the execution of a change order number one to work assignment number one to agreement number 20-r07458BLS with CARES Environmental Services Incorporated for Debris Management Services and Emergency Response Management and Recovery Services. We have a motion to approve this item by Commissioner Cruz. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We'll open number 59 up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number Seeing none, we'll close public comment, and we'll cast our votes at this time. Passes by a vote of seven to zero, Madam Clerk. We're gonna move on to item number 60, which is execution of change order number one to work assignment number one to agreement number 20-r0745548BLS with DRC Emergency Services LLC for Debris Management Services and Emergency Response Management and Recovery Services. We have a motion to approve item number 60 by Commissioner Cruz, seconded by Commissioner Baugh. We'll open the item to public comment now. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on item number 60 on today's agenda? Okay, seeing no one, we'll close public comment. Commissioners, can cast your votes now, and it passes by a vote of seven to zero, Madam Clerk. We'll move on to item number 61, which is execution of change order number one, work assignment number one to agreement number 20-r074548BLS with Phillips &amp; Jordan Incorporated for Debris Management Services and Emergency Response Management and Recovery Services. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Baugh. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ron. We'll open item number 61 up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on item number 61? Okay, seeing no one, we're gonna close public comment, and we'll, Commissioners, we can cast our votes now. I'm probably the only one that hasn't done that. And it passes by a vote of seven to zero, Madam Clerk. Item number 62, by the way, I misspoke earlier. I said that Petland was 62, it's actually 64, I apologize. Item number 62 is execution of guaranteed maximum price addendum to agreement number 22-ta004039rp for construction management at-risk services for Merit, the Maritime Museum Improvements. We have a motion by Commissioner Cruz to approve this item and seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We're gonna open item 62 up to public comment at this time. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on the new GMP for the Maritime Museum Improvements? Okay, seeing no one, we're gonna close public comment. Commissioners, can cast their votes at this time. And it passes by a vote, Madam Clerk, of seven to zero. We'll move on to item number 63, which is the adoption and execution of Manatee County's 2023 Metropolitan Planning Organization Transportation Project Priorities. Who's here to represent staff on this item?
Good morning. For the record, my name's Clark Davis. I'm Deputy Director of Public Works, and I'm, I'm here to present the MPO project priorities as the Chair read into the record. This is part of an annual process. Our Metropolitan Planning Organization is, is part of the development of the state's work program. It is a five-year program. It is the state's analog to our own capital improvement program for purposes of choosing projects for the new fifth year. If you think about the way our capital improvement program works, it's a rolling five-year block, and, and so, as the new year rolls in and they can add new projects to the new fifth year, they select projects, some of it at the state level by their own things, a group of projects they would call safety and system improvements, but there are others that they choose that are prioritized by the Metropolitan Planning Organizations. And the Metropolitan Planning Organizations do that by preparing a long-range transportation plan and then asking local governments to submit projects consistent with that plan. That is what the list is that's before you today. It's a list that's, that's based on the MPO's long-range transportation plan, but, but from input from the elected officials that serve on the MPO board and the staffs that serve on their subcommittees. And this, in theory, gets used to select some projects that'll get added at the end of the next work program. So, we're talking about things that are five or six years out. This year, well, this is part of an 18-month process, and this kicks it off, and if you think about that, that means that we must be overlapping last year's process, and we are. So, you, you adopted a list like this last year. It was used to develop a draft program that the state is sending out to the public and that the state is sending out to the public and showing to the MPOs mostly, but that they'll come to local governments if you ask them to, before they send it to the legislature. So those of you that serve on the MPO Board will be looking at a couple of things this month. The work program that resulted from last year's efforts, plus this priority list that sets the table for next year's efforts. The bad news is that while the Infrastructure Investment Jobs Act or Bi-Infrastructure, Bi-Partisan Infrastructure Law added a lot of money, what they call formula funds, that go into these MPO projects and a lot of new grants, costs have been escalating so much that we saw basically no new projects added to the program. And so this list looks a lot like last year's list. There've been a couple of minor tweaks, nothing particularly notable. But it's not all bad news because the work program did stay intact. And so a lot of projects, like DeSoto Bridge, is still on this list. We're keeping it there to keep it in people's minds. But it is fully funded in both the adopted program and the draft tentative program. The same is true for several segments of 15th Street East and so on. And then towards the end, just in case some of the grants make some money available, or we see some course corrections that allow more formula funds to be allocated, we've got a list of projects at the end that aren't prioritized because they're not based on the MPO's plan. It's money that they wouldn't have anticipated, but they're there as placeholders in case we need to show regional support. So I know that's kind of a long-winded introduction, but I was here to basically present the list for your consideration. And if you adopt it and allow the chair to execute it, we'll send it forward to the MPO. They'll meld it with all the lists from all the other local governments, and you'll see it as a preview at this month's MPO Board meeting and be asked to adopt on it, those of you that are on the MPO Board, in March.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Baugh, you were the chair of the MPO. Do you have any comments you want to add to this?
I think Clark covered it extremely well. He, you know, has talked about a lot of projects that have been ongoing now for quite a while, like 15th Street, and that has been going back and forth. But I know now that we're looking at doing that in phases, and Manatee County's taking the lead again on that, from what I gather. You know, we do have a lot of good projects in Manatee that are getting done, and we're waiting for the DeSoto Bridge, for the final finale to come up on the design and so forth. So hopefully, we'll be seeing some movement on some of the items that we have this year. Thank you, sir, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. And we just got $3 million in the, you know, I wasn't really a fan of, I'm not a fan of omnibus bills, but we did get $3 million in the omnibus bill for 15th Street East. So that's a plus. Okay, we're going to open this item up. We do need to take action on it, so we'll open it up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak on the 2023 MPO project priorities? All right, seeing no one, we'll close public comment then at this time. We have a motion to approve item number 63 by Commissioner Ron, and that has been seconded by Commissioner Ballard. We can cast our votes at this time. And Madam Clerk, it passes by a vote of seven to zero. It is now, we are on the hour at 10 o'clock, so we're going to take our scheduled 10 o'clock recess. It's well timed. And when we return in 10 minutes, we will take up item number 64. So we're in recess until 10:10. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We are moving right along here into reports. We'll start with the attorney's reports, item number 64, which is a report on litigation in Kaya Nighty. I should have let you introduce this.
You could just say the Petland case, sir.
We'll call it the Manatee County versus Petland case. And I'm going to turn the floor over to the county attorney for his report on that litigation status.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, for the record, County Attorney Bill Clegg. And this is my item. And if anybody wants to be upset about the fact that it's on the agenda and when it went on there, that's on me. What I will say about that is that there is a lot of stuff that comes through the county attorney's office and comes to the board in this timeframe because we are a busy office. But the purpose of this item is to provide the board with a report on the status of the litigation regarding ordinance 21-28. And that is, of course, well-known as the ordinance that banned the retail sale of dogs and cats in Manatee County. And the board is aware that we're very careful in the county attorney's office, very conservative, about minimizing the public discussion of litigation. And a couple of weeks before the holidays, we briefed each of you and went through the merits of a number of cases, and we try to avoid getting into the risks and downsides of those cases in public. But we also know there is significant public interest in this case, and I think this morning's public comment was a reflection of that. There are advocates on both sides that have appeared numerous times in public comment before the board, and we even have an example of running television ads recently, I understand, regarding this issue, which, quite honestly, is a new experience for me as a local government lawyer. I've dealt with a lot of litigation over the years. That's a first. So it is important that the board and the public have a realistic expectation of the county attorney's office, the county staff, and the courts in terms of how this is likely to play out. So by way of background, in 2021, the board adopted the ordinance after really several years of concerted debate. And there were strong opinions expressed on both sides of this policy issue, and I respect the opinions of people on both sides of the issue. I don't have a position on that. That's not my role here. But we were very direct throughout that process in advising the board that if an ordinance was adopted, litigation was likely, and that litigation would probably be significant. I believe at one point, when I was handling it, I did flag the potential need for outside counsel. We've thus far been able to avoid that, but that was something that we raised with the board. And we base this advice on the uncertainty in the law about this issue, about local regulation of this issue, and what I would characterize as a widespread pattern of litigation of similar ordinances throughout the state. So it was not a difficult prediction to make that we would see litigation, and we did. And in 2021, there was a lawsuit filed, and that lawsuit continues. So I'm going to ask Assistant County Attorney Doug Polk to just briefly provide the board with a synopsis of where we stand in that litigation, and also what we're seeing in the litigation of other similar ordinances around the state. So Doug, if you would please provide that synopsis to the board.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, Dr. Hope, Doug Polk. I am the Assistant County Attorney who is defending the case and have been defending the case since it was originally filed. I also had some hand in the drafting of the ordinance towards the very end. The majority of it was drafted before I became involved. But beginning with that, at that point in time, we started checking with various other county attorneys, primarily at the time Sarasota County Attorney's Office, because they were just coming out of this litigation or this lawsuit. And ours was patterned, our ordinance was patterned to a great degree from theirs. But I know not all the commissioners were on the board when this took place. So if I could just run through sort of the timeline so that's clear, the understanding's clear. This ordinance passed on, in August of 2021. It had a one-year provision in it, delay for enforcement to allow for capital recovery. This was a, something that we found in the case law that would help in reducing potential damages if it was found unconstitutional. And so therefore, the one-year grace period was to expire, and enforcement was to be allowed to begin on October 10th of 2022. On November 29th of 2021, Petland, and there are actually two, neither are called Petland, but we'll just refer to them as Petland, two stores, two different entities operating as Petland, filed suit. They filed a five-count complaint, essentially just involves three arguments. A preemption argument, that is, that the state statute preempts the county from entering an ordinance like this or enacting an ordinance like this. A stoppil, which is essentially an argument that they relied on prior actions of the board, and therefore we can't go back on those types of actions. And three, and probably the most in-depth one, is the constitutional challenge, whether the ordinance itself is unconstitutional, either facially or as applied. We answered in January of 2022, and at that point in time, Petland, through their attorneys, moved for a temporary injunction against enforcement. And we had a long evidentiary hearing across the street, and the judge denied their motion for an injunction. However, he did allow for 45 days for Petland's attorneys to go to the Second District Court of Appeals in Lakeland and try to get or obtain an injunction from them or a stay from them. That is not really how it works. The trial judge has to do it first, or they have to go before the trial judge. The Second DCA told Petland's lawyers that. And so they then, prior to the expiration of the 45 days, came back to the trial court here and asked for him to reconsider, since they weren't able to do that. The judge, at that point in time, we had another hearing, and at that point in time, the court extended the stay or the stay against enforcement until such time as this current appeal is completed. And it's, I want to make sure that you all understand that we have an even, we have the underlying case that I talked about, and then we have the court's decision not to enter the injunction. And that's the only thing that's on appeal. So this whole appeal that we're going through right now is only on whether or not the court erred in refusing to grant the appeal. And so the court has said, he's going to stay enforcement. We can't enforce it up until this appeal is over. And I don't want there to be any misunderstanding, because I get calls all the time, too. We've barely started on the underlying case at this point in time. We've done some initial discovery. Everybody's objected to everything. Of course, there'll be hearings on that. But at any rate, the current appeal is only as to this limited issue. They filed their brief. Ours is due Friday. And I suspect that, given my recent rulings from the Second DCA, we will get a ruling by the end of this year, although I waited a year and a half on one just previously. So we may or may not see the end of this, and therefore, the stay continues through the end of this particular portion of the appeal. the end of this particular portion of the appeal. During this time, Mr. Clegg asked me to kind of give you an idea of what, of various other jurisdictions, what's happening sort of around the state. I didn't do a specific case by case. One was done previously in 2021 when this was done. It wasn't necessary for my defense of the case, but in the course of defending this case, I have spoken with many county attorneys, quite a few county attorneys. And the most recent county attorney that I spoke with was over on the East Coast, and they were, they're literally about three months behind us. They copied our ordinance. They're in the same situation we're in, and they just issued an additional six months to begin enforcement. Their enforcement was to begin December 15th, and they've moved that to June 15th, while they see if there was something in between. I've also talked to a number of county attorneys who are discussing the possibility of grandfathering in existing businesses, because when you look at the two groups of litigation, and there's a lot of litigation, I can talk to you about Fayetteville, Arkansas cases, Dallas cases, this issue is being litigated with municipalities and counties and cities all over the state or all over the country. But we're not seeing litigation where there's grandfather, obviously, because there aren't damages yet. And we are seeing litigation in almost every case where there was a across-the-board ban. So I think everything since 20, during 2022, has had a grandfather clause in it. Prior to that, there were not. So I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have with regard to the litigation. As Mr. Clegg indicated, I'm sure that this will be watched by my opponent, so I would appreciate not getting too deep into the weeds with any questions.
Mr. Chairman, before we go to board questions or comments, I would like to just make a few quick concluding remarks. So there are a few essential points that I hope the board and the public understands about where we are in this. First, as long as the ordinance remains on the books as the local law of the county, the county attorney's office has the responsibility to defend it. That's what you pay us to do, and that's what we'll do. Secondly, people should understand, this is a long fight, and it's going to command significant resources, legal resources initially, and if we get to the point where we can enforce the ordinance, staff resources. And it is unlikely, and some people won't want to hear this, but it is unlikely to put a quick end to the retail pet sales that the advocates of this ordinance want to see, because that is not how litigation on this level works. That is just, and it's not realistic to expect that either of us or of the court system. And finally, the law is, in my view, still in flux on this issue, and there are also numerous additional points where the plaintiffs can raise additional claims or actions with the courts. So the outcome is uncertain. It could go really well, and I shouldn't say, I don't want to editorialize it from a policy standpoint, it could go really well from the point of view of the people who advocated for this, that they get the end result that they want after years of litigation. But it could go the other way, and it's really, really difficult to predict which way it will go. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair. That concludes our report, and we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
Thank you, sir. So I did not vote to, I voted no on this. I felt like this was a legal mess waiting to happen. I also disagreed for some other fundamental sort of core principle reasons, and so I voted no on this, as did at least two of my colleagues on the board, so three of us voted no on this. I am curious to gauge the temperature of the board on this particular issue and sort of see if there's a will on behalf of the board to continue spending money in pursuing this litigation or not. So we do have two commissioners, three commissioners, three commissioners on the board, Ron Bearden, Ballard, four commissioners on the board, Ron, okay, so we will get the, we will get the temperature of the board soon. Ron Bearden, Ballard, and Cruz. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I know this is a hot issue here in the county, and I know there are people here today that are for this ban and there are people here that are against this ban. If I'd have been on the previous board, I'd have voted no also on this issue, being that I think this is a, stopping a business from operating here in Manatee County, it's been here for 20-something years and has operated properly within Manatee County. It employs a lot of folks, I think somewhere between 80 and 90 people. This business also supplies our sheriff's department with food for their K-9 units, so they are a charitable organization. And I feel that this is basically interference in someone being an operated business, a legally operating business here in Manatee County. We have some illegally operating businesses here in Manatee County that we need to shut down, but I don't believe this is one of them. I support Nates, I support bishops and all other adoption agencies. I adopted my dog that I've had for 11 years, he's now 16, and adopted my previous two dogs before that, so I'm not against dog adoption, this has nothing to do with this. I don't believe it has anything to do with the puppy mills. I've sat down with locally, look, I don't, hey, I don't need to comment, right? You got your chance. You know, so, you know, I've been to both Petlands, I've talked to their breeders, I've, you know, met with all, met with them even before, during my election and whatnot. What I find interesting is, is that the opposition that's here today is not in opposition to the Biden's recent ominous bill that gave 2.3, stop, stop.
Hold on, stop, stop, stop. Ma'am, I have, I have, I am warning you, this is your final warning, the next time you have an outburst, I'm going to have you removed from the chamber. Okay, Commissioner Ron.
Thank you. My wonder is, is where is the outcry for the $2.3 million that was just awarded in this funding to inject puppies with cocaine that the National Institute for Health is doing and continues to abuse animals for testing and those type of things, be it cats, dogs, whatever? So where's the outrage for that? Where is instead coming after two local businesses? Like I said, these businesses have been open for 22 years here in town. If they were running in bad operation, I don't doubt there's some bad Petland operators. There probably are in the country. I don't doubt that for one second. But if these, this one, the businesses here, they've been operating in a bad manner, in bad faith, they would have been shut down earlier, they would have been shut down years ago. I, too, have friends of mine that have bought pets from Petland, and that was their choice, and they were given that choice. They chose not to adopt, they chose not to get a rescue dog, they chose to do this. And it's their right also to be able to go out and do this and be able to purchase, purchase the puppy or cat that they want. You know, so I'm not against adoption by any means. I believe we should have adoption services, and I believe we should support those adoption services that are out there. With that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to instruct the county attorney to come up with a ordinance to repeal the current ordinance that's in place, and that would be, if there was a need to be a motion, that would be the motion I would make.
So I'm going to, we have Bearden, Ballard, Cruz, and Vaughn on the board, but is essentially asking to make a motion. So I'm going to go to the county attorney first, because I think the board probably has a couple of questions about that. One, the repealing of the ban, but two, we are also engaged in litigation, and what would the essentially exit strategy be for that? Mr. County Attorney?
Well, Mr. Chairman, commissioners, I don't see the litigation ending unless the ordinance is repealed or amended significantly to grandfather those businesses. As long as it is on the books as the law of the county, I think we will have to continue to litigate to defend that ordinance. If the board wants to change, then yes, the appropriate way to do that is to direct us to bring you another ordinance to repeal that ordinance, because it works like when the legislature adopts a bill and puts it in Florida statutes, the only way to take it out of Florida statutes is to adopt another bill and remove it. And the same thing is true for our ordinances and our code. Judging by past experience, it's likely to be a big hearing, but that's the process that we have to go through to legislate as a county. Does that answer your question, Mr. Chairman?
I think so, yes. Leslie, so I need on the board a motion to repeal the retail sale, the ban of cats and dogs, is what I need on the board.
Could I rephrase that?
Or perhaps we'll use the attorney's phrasing of my idea.
Because we're pretty careful about this, and we are in litigation.
I mean, this is mainly for our reference, what's on the board here, but...
I understand. I would, the motion I would suggest, if this is the way the board wants to go, is to direct the county attorney's office to schedule and advertise an ordinance to repeal ordinance 21-28.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion then by Commissioner Ron, and it is seconded by Commissioner Vaughn. Madam Clerk, do you have that? Okay, thank you.
I do have one additional comment just before you get into the deliberations and discussions. We're litigating right now, and we're facing court deadlines, and those are commanding resources. You should expect this to come back pretty quickly, because we have to, we have to decide as an office, are we, are we going to focus on litigating or are we going to focus on bringing this back for a board decision? We only have a certain amount of time to do that. We're going to endeavor to bring that back on the 31st.
And I respect that. We've had conversations, you and I, about the resources in your office being stretched thin, and so clear direction is needed.
Okay, thank you. And that is, that is the way we work, and we have a limited amount of resources, we're funded by the taxpayers, and so we have to make choices. So I think the board should expect that. I don't want people to be upset when it comes back quickly, because if it passes, it will.
Sure. Okay, Bearden, Vaughn, Ballard, Cruz, excuse me, Bearden, Ballard, Cruz, Vaughn. Commissioner Bearden.
Thank you, Chair. So I've been accused of essentially receiving money, and I think the people that are accusing me need to actually do their research. They talk about doing research of, you know, people doing certain things and, and, you know, accusing them of essentially taking money from donors. You know, you guys talk about a big, that you guys are a big research firm, essentially, that you guys do all your research. Well, you missed this one. So I think you should look back into that to ensure that, you know, the people that did receive money received it. To me, this, it's a constitutional issue to me. My number one thing that I ran on was to protect people's rights, to protect the Constitution, because I raised my right hand to defend the Constitution. And I've actually seen the blood that's been shed for it. And when we go about talking about stripping people's constitutional rights from them, then there's a major issue, right? I just didn't go through the motions to get a job, to get a promotion. I did it to protect your rights, and that's all right. So to me, shutting down a business from selling certain things from a USDA-approved vendor, our job is not to regulate where they get their puppies from. That is the job of the federal government, not the local government. If they are doing this legally, okay, it is not our job to regulate that, because then all of us up here breached our oath to defend the Constitution. And I'm not willing to do that for anybody. Next thing is, how much has this essentially, how much has this cost us?
Honestly, sir, it's a legitimate question, and I can get you an answer, but I couldn't answer it off the top of my head. We'd have to go back through our timekeeping system and pull those records, but we can do that. If the board's so inclined, I'll provide that.
Well, I don't think it's necessary that we spend any more money on this issue as a county, okay? You know, the very people that are telling us to shut down and regulate a business from selling certain items legally, I don't see them in here telling us to shut down brothels that are exploiting children. I've never, not once, heard that in the last few years. So all I'm saying is that we don't need to be up here regulating a business where people enjoy going into shop, that actually give back into the community. And I'm not willing to step on the rights of this small business owner that has a significant amount of income from purchasing their inventory, puppies, from a perfectly legal business. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clegg, if this vote passes today, this item will then come back before us once or twice more?
Once, in a full public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Ballard?
Ten days' notice.
So I, I do think that preventing dogs from being abused in puppy mills is a very noble goal, 100%. I agree with that. I adopted my dog from the Humane Society, and I do think that we need to be supporting the Humane Society and other rescue organizations. Unfortunately, I don't think that the ordinance that was passed achieves the goal that it purports to achieve. I think that what it actually does is that it puts these underground breeders, it makes them the only source of purebred dogs in, in Manatee County. It takes these legally operating, regulated businesses, shuts them down in favor of people who are not going to follow the law. So that's one of my major concerns with this. My other concern, I echo Commissioner Bearden, of what is this going to cost the county? This litigation, it's already been going on, we're coming up on the second year. We haven't even gotten into the meat of the litigation at this point. I am very, very concerned about what this is going to cost taxpayers for a very uncertain result. I don't think that the juice is worth the squeeze. I think that for the people who are activists on this issue, I think that they would be better served to try to address it at a higher level of government where they can actually have the impact that they would like to have, because I don't think that putting these ordinances in on the county level is actually achieving the, the reduction of dogs that are being born into puppy mills. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I'll try to stay on actual topic. I mean, we're not really debating the physical ordinance, we're debating whether or not to, what's going on with the lawsuit and whether to bring back, what will ultimately be a debate. So I think you all know my position on this. I was one of the four people who voted in favor of this ordinance in the first place. I'll be someone who always votes in favor of this ordinance. I fundamentally disagree with what you're working to do here. I do like the fact that everyone talks about the USDA, federal organization, is so trustworthy as we bash everything on the federal government on an endless basis, except for that, that one particular organization is fully capable of doing our job for us. But the reality is, I just think this sets a terrible precedent. I mean, my question, I guess, to the county attorney is, this isn't our only lawsuit we're dealing with, correct?
Absolutely not.
Okay, your smile says, I mean, are we now open to literally coming back and discussing anything someone's suing us for? And, because here's my question, we have some, say, land cases that we're dealing with right now that have been in lawsuit longer than this, correct?
Some of them, yes.
And they probably, some of them have cost us more money than this, correct?
Definitely, yes.
Okay, but yet you haven't put those on an agenda to come back and discuss with this board to determine whether we feel the juice is worth the squeeze of continuing those particular lawsuits.
So can I address that, Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Cruz, if you're asking why I've brought this forward for the board, I mean, we are not, they're not running television ads about those cases, all right? We're not getting public comment periodically about what we should do.
We do, there are certain cases, one in particular, that were voted on before I got on the board.
Please let me finish. So my concern and the reason I brought this forward, and it was not, it was just a report, it was not asking for action, that's... It was not asking for action. That's something the board has chosen to do is because, and I've said it before, there seems to be a public expectation that we're going to shut down the retail sale of cats and dogs any day now. And we've had people come up and complain, why isn't it happening faster? And that's just not realistic. And the only way we can have that dialogue is here, live and in color. I can't do that in some other fashion. So if, and I apologize if you object to that, if you're uncomfortable with it, but I do feel like it was the right decision to make.
I don't object to it. It's an honest question. It's an honest question of, you know, if we're setting a precedent that we can reconsider anything if somebody sues us long enough, then that opens up a question of, are there other things currently in lawsuit that we can bring in front of this board and basically change the will of a previous board to avoid potential additional cost and time?
The truth is that there often are and we tend to talk candidly with our client and try to get a sense of where our client wants us to go with those before anything comes before you. And that's really all I should say about that at this point.
Okay, I just think we're.
That's my job, you know.
Okay, I hear you. I just think we're setting a bad precedent to waive things simply because somebody drags us into court for long enough. I think that opens up anybody suing us and knowing that, you know, we'll just basically cave instead of fight for anything that a board determines because at some point in time, you can waste enough of our time and enough of our resources that even the best intentions and things voted on by a majority of this board will just go away rather than defend it. But that's just my opinion.
Well, I just, I do want to make sure that the board understands I'm not recommending that you throw in the towel on the litigation. That is not in this agenda item. It was just a report to make sure you understand where we are and that you have a realistic expectation of how it's going to go and it's going to command resources, significant resources. It is not a recommendation, you know, that we can't win. We just don't, but it's very difficult to predict at this point because this is a really hot area in the law right now around the state.
Commissioner Vaughn?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I think Commissioner Ballard said it the best I've heard. I wrote this down. The juice isn't worth the squeeze. And I think that we do have, you know, a situation where we have to think about the taxpayer money that's being spent and whether or not we're going to be successful in the end. I mean, that's really what it boils down to. What are the odds that we'll be successful in the end? I didn't vote for this when it came back. You know, it doesn't matter. I'm not looking to run for some higher office or anything like that which is going to make me go away from what I feel the right thing to do is. I didn't vote for it. I will vote to pull it and, well, I second the motion. I think that we need to sit back and get into reality a little bit. And I don't think we're there. You know, the thing of it is, is that this board, I think in some ways Commissioner Bearden was correct. This really isn't something we should be looking at. And I said this before, this is really a state issue. I mean, all 67 counties are not going to vote to ban puppy mills. Do I think most of them should be banned? Yes, I do. I agree. But, you know, that's not going to happen. So it really is a state issue that the state should take up. I know they did a couple of years ago. I'm hoping they will again soon. I know that I have mentioned that in conversation with our legislators. And maybe they feel like it the same way that, you know, they look at it the same way I do. I'm not going to hurt a business that employs citizens of Manatee County when essentially they're all, not all of them have done anything wrong. And so I will not vote to put somebody basically out of business when they really haven't done anything wrong. I'm not going to do it. I didn't do it last time. I certainly want to uphold the litigation today moving forward. So I think it is the right thing to do to stop it. We have to sit back and look at every situation where we are spending taxpayer money. That is our job. And I think it's ridiculous if we don't do that. So let's look at it from a standpoint of what can we do to protect the pets in and around the state of Florida? That's what it's all about. It's not about shutting down Petland because people don't want them to be able to buy pets there. So thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be voting for the motion.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm next on the board. I would like to start out by saying that I've heard commissioners reference Nates. I've heard you reference the Humane Society and other adoption facilities. And I would remind you that Manatee County Animal Care is run by this board and part of this government. And I would recommend everyone to adopt an animal from Manatee County Animal Care. So with that said, and by the way, I adopted one of my dogs in the Humane Society and the other from Manatee County Animal Care. I think personally, you know, you have to have some, you know, I don't know. I'll just say, well, there's a sucker born every minute. I walk through Petland and they've got like $3,000 Chihuahuas and I'm thinking, what does that come out to per pound? And they'll finance you nonetheless. Oh, they'll finance you. And I'm like, financing a dog? You don't need the dog, man. We got them all over the place. Come to Manatee County Animal Care. We got a dog for you. It won't cost you three grand and you don't need to finance it. So we actually have sponsorships. You can get it for basically nothing. They say that, but then I brought mine home. He chewed up the blinds and then I had, now he's on, you know, some medicine for chewing his feet and, you know, $100 dog bags, the dog food.
That's typical.
Yeah, yeah, but the dog was free, right? So at any rate, I would also like to just reference Commissioner Cruz's comments regarding the county attorney. I think it's a little unfair to say that, you know, cast that wide net and to say that he's going to do this with every item that comes forward. I understand your frustration with this one. But the truth is, there were three people, there were four people who voted for this and only one of them remains on the board at this time. And he does run an office of limited resources and this does consume considerable resources. And as Commissioner Ballard pointed out, he's about to get into the meat of the litigation, which is, you know, the amount of resources being consumed will increase. So I don't think it's unfair, or I don't think it's, I think it's correct for him to then come to the board and say, I want to, you know, find out what is the will of the board at this point because I'm about to expend an awful lot of time and money on this. Is this something you want me to continue to pursue? I think that's a fair question for him to come to this board and ask. And I'm, but I agree with Commissioner Cruz that this is not the time to get into the debate on, you know, the merits of whether or not this should be, we should repeal the ban. The, that's for, this is whether or not we want to continue the litigation, I guess, is what we should be discussing now. This will come before us again. It has to be advertised for 10 days and then it'll come before us again. And at that time, we can get in, or I would like to get into a healthy debate on whether or not it's the right thing to do. I don't have anyone else on the board at this time. Before we go into public comment, Madam Clerk, just to make sure you have, Mike Ron made the motion, Vanessa Vaughn seconded. Okay, so then we're going to open this item up to public comment. No one has signed up previously, but I know that we have folks that are here that would like to come forward and speak. So I'll just remind everyone, when you get to the podium, please start off by stating your first name, your last name, your county of residence. And then you'll have three minutes to speak specifically on this item, on the motion on the floor, okay?
Before we get started, I'd like to remind the people of this dais, the rules of cross-speaking back here because people clearly don't understand it.
We'll take care of that. You focus on the motion on the floor.
All right. Andrea Griffin, Manatee County. George, I love you. I think you're a great county commissioner, but this was really a horrible, horrible ordinance. I didn't support it then. I'm not going to support it now. Here's why. I am on the same mindset as many of the people on this board. We have to consider people's rights. Whether you agree with somebody spending $3,000 on a dog or not, that's not your right to choose for them, just like it's not my right to choose where you get your dog. Furthermore, if we were to say, and paint a broad brush and say that, oh, because this person over in Orlando may have used a puppy mill that abused puppies, that we have to act like ours is doing the same is unfair because we had Bernie Madoff. He was in the financial sector. You're in the financial sector. If that same thing would have been applied and they would remove your license because people can rob people, people can take their whole life savings, then we would stop the financial sector here. Real estate, because people have conned people, stole deeds, sold properties they don't own. We should stop real estate for like somebody like Vanessa that deals with jewelry. People have sold fake jewelry. For this precedent, we should now close down jeweler stores. So by this precedent, you guys are all out of business, okay? So we can't apply that precedent. First of all, it's our right to choose. George, you can sweat your eyes at me. I love you. We're still going to work together the next few years. So it is what it is. This is just how I feel. But we cannot stop people. I'm a capitalist. You know I'm a capitalist. I'm all about people doing whatever is lawful to make a dollar, okay? Whatever's lawful. And it's not my choice. I don't buy dogs, nor can I afford a dog from one of these nice places. If I want to get an animal, I would have to go to Manatee County Animal Services or some other place because of the financial aspect of getting a dog. But that's my choice. You're not making that choice for me. Nobody on this board is making that choice for me. I'm making that choice for myself and I think that choice needs to be made by the people. Until you can bring evidence to us that says that our puppy mills, our, the people that we are, that are in our county are violating the law, I am not going to support this because I am not going to say, oh, because this Orlando company does this, that our company has to, or our companies here have to be doing it too. I think that is unfair. We would not appreciate it if that same standard was applied to each and every one of us. And I definitely support repealing this ordinance. We need to, we have better things to be fighting for than dogs. I know my opposition is going to be kill the babies, save the dogs. I'm saying save the babies. If the dogs have to go, they got to go.
Ma'am, ma'am, please. Look, I'm going to ask you to leave soon. Stop. Next speaker, please step to the podium. First and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on this item.
Representing Women's Voice of Southwest Florida, I have the appropriate paperwork and signatures. My name is Tracy Lipton, Manatee County, and I need to give it to the clerk so I can get my 10 minutes.
Yeah, that does not apply in this context.
I was told by one of your administrators.
Okay, if it's all right, I'll run the meeting for a second. So that is only in land use matters, quasi judicial matters. This is not a quasi judicial land use matter. This is a legislative item. And so you only have three minutes, ma'am.
Well, you should educate your people then.
First and last name, you have three minutes.
Manatee County. I had a whole speech planned, but clearly that's really going to go out the door because your intentions are super clear. Mr. Bearden, I'm not one who said you took money. It was Mike Ron that took money. The maximum donation of $1,000. I'm not sure if you did. I've seen paperwork, but I'm not quite sure. You want evidence about Petland Bradenton and Petland Sarasota? Mr. Hopes has it. This documentation is literally receipts and evidence brought from the Humane Society. Receipts, pictures, and evidence, this entire thing by Petland Bradenton and Petland Sarasota. This is strictly those two Petlands. The Humane Society, Mr. John Goodwin, sent it to Hopes, but he sat on it instead of giving it to the lawyers. How come? How come y'all did not get this evidence until recently? A lady that's an office administrator named Patricia Nolan received this because I asked John Goodwin to FedEx it to her. This is all evidence, documentation, that they come from puppy mills. Let's give you one puppy mill, for example, that's in here, that I have receipts that Petland Bradenton bought from. Here's just one of the many. Where do I put this? There. That's just one of the numerous receipts. This person has been prosecuted 500 counts of animal cruelty and running a puppy mill. That's just one of them, okay? This is where they purchased from. You all know the useless DA does nothing. They come out sometimes once every seven years, tell them to fix something and then go on their merry way. Okay, just like Mr. Cruz, hi, Mr. Cruz, by the way, says, how come y'all have all this confidence in the USDA, but all the other government entities are BS? I mean, and as far as Biden and injecting puppies with cocaine, you think I'm for that? You think I'm not out there advocating for things like that? And what Fauci did with the Beagles to end? And I do foster, and I did just adopt one of my fosters from Manatee County Animal Services. There are also breed-specific rescues, okay? You want a Golden Doodle? You can get a Golden Doodle and not have to buy it from the puppy mill entity that Petland is. I have nothing against Petland in particular. I have a problem with stores that sell puppy mill dogs. And I'm going to give you all of this evidence, okay? This is two stores in your county that are supporting the puppy mill pipeline. 70 places in Florida have this ordinance in your home state and none of them have lost a lawsuit that Petland has brought, not one, okay? So that answers all your questions. Now, you want to spend taxpayers' money on bringing up a statute that the Daughters of the Confederacy won't go on? Vanessa Ball, how much did the taxpayers pay for your defense?
Thank you, ma'am.
You didn't pay for your own lawyer. How much did we pay for that, Vanessa?
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
I actually did pay for it. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Bye-bye.
Next speaker. Next speaker, ma'am, please state your first and your last name, your county of residence. And you'll have three minutes to address the board on this issue. Actually, I'm going to have you hold on just a moment. I don't want to start your time just yet. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Shannon Spring, Manatee County. Commissioner Cruz, thank you for being an honorable man. You are the only person who is making eye contact consistently throughout the meeting and I take that as a sign because you are proud of your character as well you should be. This is not an issue about rescue animals versus breeder animals. This is an issue of cruelty. Semper Fi. What does that mean? Always faithful. Is that not exactly what we say about our canine companions, that they are always faithful to us? I have seen a circus up here this morning. I adopted, I rescued, my dog cost me $100. It's like a whiny fest of nonsense. We're not telling you that you have to rescue. We're not telling you that you can't buy your dog. I'm all for capitalism. Make as much money as you want, shop wherever you want. And if you honestly think that the employees of Petland can't find any other job in the state or the city that they live in, then selling cruelty, then perhaps they need some of the other county resources that we have to offer them because that's a disgrace. I hear a lot of sympathy for a business owner. I'm a business owner. I'm also a teacher and I mentor children, something I'm very proud of. I live my life completely transparently. I wonder if you do the same. We know that Semper Fi is the slogan for the Marines. What is the slogan to become a commissioner? I'd love to see that posted and then have every single one of you have to put your hand across your chest and pledge allegiance to that. I don't know how you open up a meeting and pray to God and then defend the devil the rest of the time that you're up here because that's exactly what you're doing. Commissioner Ballard, I commend you for the work that you're doing with addiction and opioids. That has been a cause very personal to my heart. I can't imagine that you would allow any of your colleagues up here to give you a hard time or pushback on the amount of money that taxpayers spend on fighting addiction. The puppy mill issue is no different than an addiction issue. There is an addiction to cruelty in our society and I am sadly seeing that displayed on our county commissioners here. The only person who's been making eye contact with me is Commissioner Cruz and now Commissioner Ballard. Commissioner Ballard, you obviously have a heart towards people that need a second chance. These animals, they have no voice. This is not about crazy animal activists. This is about people who have a heart, people that wear their heart on their sleeve, on their chest. I will always spend my life, I advocate for all types of animal welfare, by the way, Mike. I'm not for dogs being drugged. I'm not for them being tested on medically. Quite honestly, I would rather have gotten COVID than have had animals tested to protect my body. I am not pro cruelty is my message. I wonder what it is, though, that you stand for? And you're all talking about the animals that you have. So you'll protect your own animal, but everybody else's animal that doesn't have a mom or a dad is fair game? That's no different than saying you'll protect your own children, but screw the kids in foster care. Do better because we are watching you and I am embarrassed at what I see, other than for you and the work that you're doing.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your comments. Okay, next speaker, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
I'm a resident and business owner, Manatee County. I guess I'm just really confused about why we think it's a, why this is unconstitutional. What right are we taking away from them? We're not trying to close Petland. We're not trying to close them. We're trying to ask them to change their business plan. There are numerous businesses around with that business plan that sells puppy products, not puppies. And they're thriving. We have so many people in this county to support all of them. None of them are going anywhere. All we're asking them to do is change their business plan. No one would be out of a job. We're just asking them to stop selling puppies and stop supporting the animal abuse, which is proven. It's proven. So please. So please, do not rescind this ordinance. It's the right thing to do to keep this ban. And in regards to the litigation, I, I don't, I, I don't know what the solution is. Do, I mean, does the community need to come together and have a big fundraiser to help pay for this? Because we'd get a shit ton. That's it.
Ma'am, please state your first and last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Carmella Delvecchio, and I'm in Manatee County. Please don't rescind this ordinance. The point, the whole point of it is to save innocent lives, to stop the suffering and the dying of these god-awful puppy mills. Okay? I've been a taxpayer almost all my life, and this is one tax that I would not mind paying. That's all I have to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. You probably know the routine by now, right?
Yeah. Hi, Christina Ariaga, Manatee County. Thank you, Mr. Cruz. I appreciate you standing up when everybody on your board seems to be of the opposite mind. I was here in August when the ordinance was passed, and I can't tell you how happy I was. As a member of animal welfare organizations for the past 10 years, I'm very familiar with organizations such as Best Friends, Bailing Out Benji, who are nationwide organizations. And I brought these, and I hope that you all will look at them. They do give a lot of information on what puppy mills are and why they are in existence. And also, it mentions the USDA regulations, since, you know, you brought that up. US regulations, USDA regulations allow licensed breeders, licensed breeders, to own 1,000 or more dogs, keep them in very small cages, which are only required to be six inches bigger than the dog, for their entire lives, and breed them as often as possible. That's just one of the facts in here, and I just really hope that you guys get informed on this. One of the initiatives of the Best Friends organization is actually to try to help stores like this to develop a new business model, where they can get rescue animals and sell those, as well as the products and services that everybody else has mentioned. So it's not about putting the store out of business, it's just asking them to stop supporting these puppy mills. And I really don't understand how we passed an ordinance, told them they have a year to close, and then they don't close, so they sue, and now they're threatening to continue litigation, so we're just gonna repeal the ordinance because we don't feel like fighting an ordinance that we passed. That makes no sense to me. Why? I think I've stated my case again. Thank you again, Mr. Cruz. Where can I leave these, in case you guys would like to look at them? And please do check out their websites as well, not just these brochures, but there's so much information. I would love for you to all to be educated on this topic, not just what you hear from each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Tom DeSilva, Sarasota County. Heard a lot today, but let's say thank you all for the commissioners that heard the voice of all the concerned citizens and passed before the ban of the retail sales of dogs and cats, and also for having Manatee County joining in with many other counties and cities already having such a desperately needed ban. The ordinance should be, have gone into effect last August, and I am here to ask that the county keep the ban in place and starts to enforce it. There are many, there are way too many domestic animals in dire need of laws to protect them from irresponsible breeding or impulse buying of puppies and kittens. They are ending up being abandoned to animal shelters, abused, many others put to death because of lack of finding adoptive homes. People really, people that really care and love about dogs, should have, I'm sorry, people that are really loving, ready to have a domestic animal can find one in many shelters, rescue places, or even responsible breeders. It is time for our society to have their hearts to understand this very unkind problem and stop treating all our domestic animals companions as if they are a toy, a property, or a product on the shelf of a store. They are not. They are living beings, and anyone with a heart able to feel can look into the eyes and understand that. I ask, please, keep the ban on the, the retail sales of puppies and cats and enforce it. Thank you. I guess I have a little time, so it's not really about closing the business. I mean, they can thrive pretty well. It's just one life that they keep breeding constantly here, bodying through, you know, through the, the city. And with just tons of people, dogs already in the shelters and abuse everywhere, so just, there's no need to close. And, you know, just, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and then you'll have three minutes to speak on this item. And you might want to pull the microphone down so it's pointing towards your face. It was left pointed straight up in the air. There you go.
Hi, my name is Gail Midwood. I reside in Sarasota County. I, I'd like to put this to rest, this idea that we're trying to put Petland out of business. We are not. We're just trying to get them to change their business plan. I'd also like to make, please, please, read the brochure. When you read those brochures and you see the sizes of the cages of these dogs, the USDA affiliates, that this, these dogs be kept in these cages, it's just fine with them for the dog's life. What is a puppy mill? Well, first of all, no reputable breeder breeds litter after litter to sell to a broker or a pet store, not caring or knowing where or with whom those puppies end up. Puppy mills, that's the red flag for puppy mills. And also, the no reputable breeder encourages impulse buying. If you walk into Petland and you have the money or credit, you can walk out with a pet, no questions answered. Reputable breeders keep up with their, people who buy their puppies. There's, they're always there for you. So we're not trying to, there's no pipeline of underground breeders. Every ordinance that's been passed has an, a part of that ordinance that allows hobby breeding. But puppy mills are horrible, and you need to understand that the criteria of a reputable breeder is never to sell their puppies wholesale to a broker or a pet shop, not knowing or caring where those puppies go. That would be like having an adoption agency, where you could just walk in and walk out with a kid, no questions asked. That is what is happening now. Yet, we are not trying to put them out of business. We're just asking them if they can change their policy. There are plenty of large stores that sell supplies and also offer pets at a nominal amount of money. That's all. Thank you for listening to me.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. First and last name, county of residence, you have three minutes.
Kaitlyn Danny-Samitz, for the record, Manatee County. I would actually like to start off, having revisited information after Commissioner Bearden approached and regarded you not having received those donations. I want to take responsibility for that and say that it was an oversight on my part for information I had received, and I'd like to apologize to you for that, moving forward from that. Oh, actually, I'd also like to commend your, your dedication to defending people's civil liberties and their, and their fundamental American rights. I hope to see that continue throughout the rest of your, you know, your career here. Regarding the puppy mill ordinance, Humane Society report that, that thick stack that Tracy had brought up can be, cannot be fully summed up, but issues that can be touched on in that include the fact that Petland Bradenton has gotten their puppies from out-of-state mills that have been cited for those small cages, for underage puppies being sold, for buying from unlicensed breeders, for incorrect medications being distributed, sick puppies being sold, and improper veterinary oversight for those puppies that are being sold by the thousands. At this time, y'all did mention almost, most everybody up here adopted their dogs. So I think that we can all agree that there is an overabundance of pets that are adoptable here in the state of Florida, especially in Manatee County, and asking Petland to change their business model to sell things for those dogs instead of sell puppies that are kept in those cages. I mean, I know the majority of you have to have gone to a Petland, right? And I'm sure you've seen the four or five puppies in that fiberglass thing with feces and the mats underneath. You know, it's, they're, they're, they're very pretty and fluffy in the morning. You go in about 2:00 PM, it's, it's, it's a testament to the actual care they're receiving. And in the essence of time, because I have to get back to work, regarding the concerns of taxpayer dollars, the majority of people on this board have already benefited from taxpayers paying legal fees, you know, to, to aid them. So I think that being considerate of your constituents' taxpayer dollars is something that you should have started a long time ago. If you're going to be concerned about your constituents, listen to them, whether or not they voted for you, whether or not they donated to you, whether or not they're under the same registered party affiliation as you. Start listening, because we were referred to as the opposition earlier. I'm nobody's opposition. Like, yes, I would hope that if you're gonna protect somebody's right to sell dogs, you would also protect my right to control my uterus, but that's not why I'm here. I'm nobody's opposition. We're not each other's opposition. We're a community. You can say yes, and that's, that's your truth. We're a community. We got to figure out how to do this together. I'm just gonna leave it at that, because I'm about to get mushy. I'm not, I'm not doing that.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, first and last name, county of residence.
Sarah Parker, you spelled her name wrong, though. I'm just gonna let y'all know that. She hates that. I'm gonna have to hear about it all later on. It's okay. I'm just letting you guys know, because I'm gonna have to hear about it. My name is Sarah Parker. I am the president of Women's Voices of Southwest Florida. I am going to start off with a couple of things. We call ourselves fiscally conservative, right? Now, any of you guys know me and have talked, I tend to lead libertarian. I'm pro guns, I am pro having, I'm pro of my body. We literally brought the person that ran for vice president here into this chamber, we did, as Women's Voices. During the hurricane end, during Hurricane Ian, when we were working, we got pasta from the Proud Boys. They delivered it to me. Okay? I know how to work together with everyone. So again, we are your neighbors. We are not your opposition. I sit with some of the people you guys know at a bar that I talk to that are Republicans all the damn time. Okay? I, I'm not here to be anyone's opposition. I am here, as we're gonna go to fiscally conservative, I appreciate, as someone that's going to paralegal, like, studies, doing paralegal studies, I appreciate what Attorney Clerk says. A lot of us do not know that, and they're, they're not aware. I had to explain to them what litigation meant when it came up on the screen, and it is going to take a very long time. I can appreciate that. But what I do not appreciate is that our, Manatee County Commissioners are being cowards. You're cowardice. Who runs to a fight, and again, I'm gonna bring up Mehmet, when, during, when, during the fall of Constantinople, one of the generals left at the very end, fought, fought amazingly. And he would have been a hero had he died there, but he ran away at the last minute and died on a boat, going away from Constantinople. Okay? Constantine, who was not a good fighter, died on the battlefield with his people. Now, let's bring that back. If you guys started litigation, finish it. Why are you so afraid to finish it? I wonder how many, as far as legal fees go, to ethics, to cases that are brought against some of you, how much comparatively, we don't even have the exact number that they've spent on this case, how much comparatively have we spent on fighting legal cases versus fighting for something that you guys all voted for? Fighting for illegal ethical cases? How much more money have we spent? How much more and more money were we going to spend when we wanted to ban abortion, even though we said, now we're saying, oh, well, puppy, puppy mills are on a state level, but we weren't saying that about abortion? We had to come in here all, every single week and sit here and harass you guys, to the point that we pushed it into the media so much that Attorney General Ashley Moody said no. We're not stupid. That's why we take that as a win. You guys need to get it together. There's obviously people out here, no one knew about this on the agenda. There are people out here that want to come and speak that can't make it here. You guys have silenced a lot of people that are just watching right now. On top of that, you're now going back on everything other Commissioners have done. And then, you want to bring a Confederate statue. How much money is that gonna cost for people to watch that Confederate statue? Because they ain't gonna be us that mess anything up. I'm gonna tell you, it ain't gonna be BLM, because we don't do that. We don't do that. You haven't seen us in this room. No one bust anyone in during the Confederate statue. People came into town. No one, we don't have the money to do it. We are, we're, yeah, we're giving backpacks away. We're doing good work, and you guys are interrupting us every time y'all put something like red meat on the agenda. Just focus on your jobs. If not, go run for state.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, please state your first name, your last name, your county of residence, and you have three minutes to speak on this specific agenda item.
Hi, my name's Shannon Keever, and I live in Manatee County. I am, this is, this is a picture of my rescue dog. I also have rescue. Sadly, also, I'm, I, you guys have gotten some really wonderful information from people here. I don't really have anything to add on the information part of it, but on, on a personal level. I, back before I was more educated on this topic, I purchased a dog from an unethical breeder. And there are ethical breeders. This particular one wasn't, and I didn't know until I learned more about it. But she was a sweet little pug, a black little pug, and named Chloe, and I loved her. I tell everybody she was my soulmate. I, I adored her. I, I'm not, I don't regret my relationship with her, but what I regret is her health issues, because she came from an unethical breeder. And she came to me with kennel cough, which is, which is deadly. Thankfully, she survived it, but she never should have, she would have been kept in close quarters with other unhealthy dogs in order to have been able to contract that at such a young age, when she was seven weeks old. Unfortunately, she, she grew and she, she died younger than what her normal lifespan should have been at 11 years, of a very painful form of cancer of her tongue and her jaw. It was heartbreaking, and it was so sad to watch, and I personally vowed that I would never, I, I would research where I got my animals from after that. Now, I currently only have rescue animals. I do reiterate what everybody is saying here, that we're not asking you to tell Petland that they need to close their doors. You guys all have pets. You know that there are other pet shops that you can go to that don't sell puppies from puppy mills, and you, Petland could still sell all of their other products. Puppies are not their only, their only product. And I just ask that you consider the cruelty that these animals that come from puppy mills experience, and do we really want to be a county that supports that? I think we don't. Also, I would really appreciate it if you don't use the two-coke-kay fallacy when you are arguing your own positions. Saying that we care about puppies, therefore, we don't care about children who are trafficked in brothels that are already illegal and are already being dealt with here, doesn't, that adds nothing to your argument. Saying that we don't care about dogs being injected with cocaine, something that's not even happening at a Manatee County level, that's irrelevant. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on the motion on the floor? Okay. Seeing no one, we'll go to Commissioner Bearden. He is the only one on the board at this time. Commissioner Bearden?
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I appreciate everybody that comes up and gives us their opinion. I mean, that's, that's great, because then we have open debate and we can talk, talk things out. Everybody that came up had an opinion, right? Just like I have an opinion. Somebody came up here and said Semper Fi. What does that mean? Always faithful. I'll say it again. Always faithful. Always faithful to what? Always faithful to the Constitution. Right? You know, some of my colleagues may not understand what that means. All right? I do. I understand what it means fully. Right? And like I said, I'm not up here looking for, I didn't run for office to, to get a different, you know, to, to expand my political career. That's not why I'm up here. I'm up here to protect people's rights. You knew that from the very first video that I pushed out, and the second one, and[1699.11] and the third one, right? That's what this is about to me. I have not heard one person come up here and tell us, "Why aren't we shutting down the Internet of organizations or businesses that actually sell puppies?" Because do you know that actually there's more puppies that are purchased on the Internet than there is in an actual pet store, right? But not one of you told us or executed it for us to shut down the Internet or Internet sells, right? So you talk about changing your business plan, that you're not trying to essentially shut down the business. Well, I don't know. I mean, if a large percentage of revenue comes from essentially purchasing these puppies from a legal organization or business, and that's what they depend on, well, then that would essentially shut down that business. I would never tell you to change your business plan because I don't agree with it, right, of what you sell. And I'm not going to be up here doing the same thing because that would be me violating the oath that I took when I raised my right hand to defend the Constitution. The primary role in of elected official is to protect people's rights, business rights and people's rights. That's their primary role. A lot of people don't know that, right? That's the very first thing. And so if I were to, say, vote against this, then I would violate my oath, and anybody up here that would vote against this would be violating their oath, right? So all I'm saying is that we're not in the business of shutting businesses down because if I'm willing to do this and shut this business down, then I'd be willing to shut down another business in the future. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Thatcher?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think sometimes we end up in these conversations where we're having a tough time because so many tangents come up. But when it comes to the core issue of animal cruelty, you've got, I believe, seven Commissioners and 90-plus, 99-plus percent, hopefully 100% of Manatee County that hates the idea of animal cruelty. None of us want to see that. You know, that's not why we're here. We want to protect animals as much as we want to protect our children, as much as we want to protect developing babies. And so I think we can all agree that that's wrong and not anything that we want to see go forward. I think, of course, you get into definitions, what counts and what doesn't, but when we see these horrible pictures and say, "This is a puppy mill," I think none of us are in favor of that. And then when I see and hear about consumers being basically scammed, where, you know, some organizations may sell something that they know is either defective or, in this case, sick, and then they end up, you know, having, holding the bag, having to pay for that, and the business should have or could have known, I don't think that most of us are going to be in favor of that either. We're going to be in favor of protecting the consumer. I think we can protect puppies. I think we can protect consumers. I do not believe a blanket ban on selling puppies, which at this time includes hobby breeders. The Humane Society in my office told me it would not when it came forward, and then when it came forward and was passed, it did. So you've got mom-and-pop breeders that, right now, if this were to pass, you know, would be included in this. A blanket ban is not the way to protect these puppies and our animals. And so, you know, after this vote, I'll make a motion and ask the county attorney's office, I know they're going to be busy in the next, between now and the 31st, as you said, but I'll make a motion for them to bring to me and the other Commissioners an update on our animal cruelty ordinances, where they stand, if they need to be updated, what we can do to be more effective, and also consumer protection here in the county. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We have no other members on the board at this time. We have held public comment on the matter. The motion is made by Ron the second, by Baal. Commissioners, you can cast your votes now. And the vote passes by a vote of six to one with Commissioner Cruz in opposition. Thank you, Commissioners. Before we move on to the next agenda item, then Commissioner Thatcher, while we're on the subject, do you want to move forward with your suggested motion? I'll give you the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With that, I'd like to move for the county attorney to, I would like to move to direct the county attorney to research Manatee County's ordinances on cruelty to animals, see where we can tighten this ship to protect animals in Manatee County.
He said tightened the ship with a P. Mr. Clegg, do you have any comment before we move forward while Leslie gets that on the motion on the board for us?
We're happy to research that, and we'll come around and probably brief each of you individually rather than schedule something for the, for a board agenda. I will have to tell you upfront, a lot of that is governed by criminal law, by state criminal law. Animal cruelty is a crime if it meets certain criteria in the state of Florida, but we can certainly look at, you know, what the, what the local options are as well.
Yeah, we'll do a voice vote. Commissioner Thatcher, would you please restate your motion?
I move to direct the county attorney to research ways to make our animal cruelty statutes and ordinances in Manatee County more effective to protect our animals that we all love and care for.
I need a second.
I'm second.
I heard Bearden first. I heard, he was whispering down there, but for a Marine, that's whispering. So the motion is made by Commissioner Thatcher and is seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We'll open this up to public comment. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak on the motion on the floor? I don't know. You tell me. Okay.
Katie Danhese Sammets, for the record, Manatee County. Can't win them all. I think this is a good motion.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else who would like to come forward to speak on this motion? All right, we're going to close public comment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
That was better, Jason.
All right, Madam Clerk, the motion passes unanimously. Okay. I believe, then, we're on to my item. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So moving on to my item, which is item number 65, Board Initiated HR Inquiry. So I think we understand what I'm referencing here. I'm referencing, and first of all, I'll start off by saying I would like this to be a board discussion. I have spoken to Dr. Hopes and to Mr. Clegg and asked them to essentially allow the board to enter into this discussion and work their way through it on our own. Obviously, if there's a grave legal concern, Mr. Clegg will have to chime in. I did also get some direction from him that essentially what we will be discussing today are the merits of whether or not a board-initiated inquiry is something that we want to do or not. However, it is strongly advised that we not get into rumor mill things, what we heard, what someone may have told you, that sort of thing, simply sticking to the merits of whether or not we should look into this. And so I'll just, I'll just get started and tell you that I'm personally not comfortable with what has taken place over the last few weeks in this building regarding this matter. I've received lots of conflicting information, and what I'm proposing today is a fact-finding inquiry, the purpose of which is accountability. Our number one concern as a board on items like this, of course, is for our employees, and the first thing that I want the inquiry to look into is whether there is merit to the complaint. This board takes any accusation such as this seriously, though it is not the role of board members to inject ourselves into an internal sexual harassment investigation, but if and when the integrity of the process is questioned, we as a board must step in. So the first thing I think we want this inquiry to look into are the merits of the accusation itself. If the accusation proves to be true, then we want to know whether or not things have been handled appropriately. If the accusation proves to not be true, then I think that we should ensure that appropriate measures are taken for that scenario. We cannot allow employees in this building to feel unprotected on either side of this issue. We must also ensure that anyone in this organization who finds themselves accused receives their right to due process. This is not a place for the cancel culture to thrive. The scope of the inquiry should extend beyond the merits of the initial claim. The inquiry must also include whether or not proper procedures were followed before and after a written complaint was filed, as we know it was some time before a written complaint was actually filed. I think we are all aware of the fact that there has, that there was excessive loose talk on the ninth floor about this incident. We as a board must ensure that the privacy rights of the complainant are respected. We all know that there are proper procedures that must be followed at times like this. The inquiry should look into whether or not anyone acted inappropriately and/or attempted to interfere with the process. As I said before, what I'm proposing is this to be a board-initiated, third-party inquiry. The board as a whole should choose an outside firm to conduct the inquiry. The board as a whole should determine the scope of the inquiry, and the results should be presented to the board. To ensure the integrity of this inquiry is my intention for administration and staff to have no role in this process whatsoever. Should minor questions arise during the course of the inquiry, I recommend that we appoint Commissioner Amanda Ballard as our liaison. She's a member of the Florida Bar in good standing, and her resume most recently includes working for an investigative agency, state agency. Should any serious questions arise that need to be brought before the board, then that should be done as a whole, and I think we should leave that decision to the discretion of Commissioner Ballard. So Commissioners, that is my proposal. I propose that we reach out to a third party, and I don't have one in mind, to be honest with you. I'm sure some of you probably have some ideas on that. Personally, I would probably prefer it not be someone local, that we sort of go outside of our area to find this firm. And that's generally the scope of what I'm looking for right there. And I think it comes down to accountability within this building. As I said, you know, I think I was politely saying there was a lot of loose talk going on, but the board, in my opinion, needs to step in at times like this and protect our employees and demand accountability. The order of the board is Baal and Ron. Commissioner Baal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I got to tell you, you know, when this first happened, and I really didn't want to see this discussed on the dais. I think it's not the place of this board to do that. However, now it has been brought forward. I initially wanted an outside firm to do an investigation because I felt like it was already out of control and things were being said, accusations toward our staff that I knew was not proper, professional, et cetera. And I knew that we could probably not be fair to staff with the things I was hearing from the administration, to be honest. I will tell you that since I was told that this was going to be on our agenda, another thing that has really concerned me is that I'm reading in the paper over the weekend how the person that's involved in this situation is saying that they've asked for, you know, us to do an investigation, and then all of a sudden, it's put on our agenda. I don't know how that came about, and I don't know that I feel it's appropriate. It seems to me that, and I'm trying to really watch what I say here and how I say it, this person is not coming, and that's another thing I kept reading in the paper, you know, this person is not coming to Manatee County to be employed. It's not going to happen. In fact, I'm going to make a motion when this is done to unconfirm the vote that we took so that that's gone. But the person already withdrew from the county. So I, you know, it's not something that I feel like, you talk about our staff. I don't feel like this is fair to our staff to put them in this position, particularly when the person has, obviously, it's done. He's not going to come here. Then I find out, and I read about the school administration and how they've put him on leave until our investigation has been completed. We haven't even said we were going to have one. Where is all this coming from? I just, I feel like that it is being controlled, not by you, Mr. Chairman, but I feel like that there are other forces involved here that seem to feel that they can decide what this board is going to do and when we're going to do it. I don't feel that I have any obligation to anyone but the people that are employed here at the county. And my responsibility to them is to protect them in this case. I feel like that this is just getting out of control. So I'm a little bit, I'm concerned. And here's another thing. We never heard what the proper procedures were that was supposed to take place by the administration. And then the next thing I know, we have people leaving this building, our staff members leaving this building until an investigation is completed. I feel like things from day one have not been done properly on this issue. This is not a discussion I wanted to have from the dais. I think it needs to go away. I think this whole thing is pitiful. It is sad, and I'm very disappointed in what has happened. But I'm even angrier over what I'm reading about the school administration and how they're waiting for our investigation to be completed when we haven't even said we were going to do one, and it's in the paper. Where is all this coming from? Talk about proper procedure. Who's speaking for this board when I'm reading that in the paper? I really, I feel like this is out of line. So, Mr. Chairman, I just felt that, you know, I needed to get that out. Things just seem out of control here, and I understand why you brought it forward. I know that you want it to be fair to all, but I don't know that the way things have been handled so far, that that would happen. So I'm very concerned. And the main thing for me at this point is I want to protect our staff members.
Yes, ma'am. May I respectfully dialogue with you for a moment?
Absolutely.
So you and I agree, I agree with everything you said with the exception of one thing, and that would be that if we want to achieve accountability and we want to protect our employees and we want to ensure, we want to find out whether or not the process was followed properly or not and whom acted appropriately and who did not, then the only way to determine that is through an investigation. And I understand it's, it's nothing I wanted to discuss on the dais either. I've had these conversations with Hopes and with Clegg going back weeks now, actually, and I told Mr. Clegg two weeks ago that I was going to be bringing this forward on the January 10th agenda. I don't let things that I read and, you know, online tabloids dictate how I govern. I made the decision two weeks ago as, that I thought that, you know what, as the chair, I need to bring this before the board because I'm sure that my colleagues are having similar consternation about what's taking place as I am, and it sounds like you are, virtually identical, but we just have a difference in opinion on what should happen from this point on. And I think what should happen from this point on is that the board needs to tell Mr. Clegg and Dr. Hopes to step back for a moment, that the board is going to step in and investigate what happened, and then we will make determinations on accountability once we have all of the facts.
May I dialogue?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I was glad that you did mention Commissioner Ballard because I had planned on doing that if I had brought this motion to the board back when it happened, when I realized that it was growing legs and being discussed, what I feel is unprofessional, in an unprofessional manner. And I will tell you, I would be, I would be not being totally upfront and honest if I didn't look at you and say that part of my concern is the county government. And I say that from the standpoint, and you spoke of Mr. Clegg, obviously, I've discussed this with him. I took it to him because I was so concerned with what was transpiring that I felt like the board needed to be protected because I had no clue. I mean, it was ridiculous. And so I have had conversation with him, and one of the things, and I'm going to go ahead and say it, that has been very concerning, is I also know that when we treat our staff so quickly, what I would call incorrectly, that it's a good possibility we're going to have a lawsuit. And I still fear that to this day. In fact, I talked to the county attorney yesterday afternoon because I was concerned about this coming forward today and what might be said about our staff. To me, this is not a witch hunt. This is not a witch hunt, and I think that's how it kind of sounds. Not that I think you mean it that way. I don't think you do. I know where you're coming from, and I know where your heart is, but it does seem like a witch hunt because right now, we really don't have a problem because the problem is gone. And so I am concerned with some of the things I've been reading in the paper that is being said about our staff by this person. And all of a sudden, this person is talking about how we're going to do an investigation. Has he contacted somebody in the county and asked for an investigation to be done? I'm not aware of it. I haven't been told that. Anybody been told that up here on this board? Did we communicate and hear that? Anybody want to answer that question for this Commissioner?
Well, I'll say that you seem to be zeroed in on his statements, and his statements are not a concern of mine at all.
Oh, I am concerned because I'm worried about our staff.
Sure, and I am too, and I think that you're correct that an inquiry is likely to reveal things that may not be pretty and things that we may not want to see. However, if they are there, I think that they need to be revealed. However, if they are there, I think that they need to be revealed, and the Board needs to deal with it.
Well, I can tell you that's probably going to happen.
I would agree.
If this passes.
I would agree. Okay. Commissioner Ron and Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Ron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, I appreciate you bringing this up today. This type of complaint is probably one of the worst you could have and have to deal with. I was concerned from the very beginning if the proper procedures and proper internal controls were done when this complaint was made. So I'm, I don't know if we should have an external inquiry, am I calling it an investigation, an inquiry, or handle this internally. I'm vacillating back and forth.
I think you can do it internally.
One, another thing is, is that I'm concerned, my only concern, one of my biggest concerns with this inquiry would be the complainant that made this complaint. And this is probably a question for the county attorney. He could probably answer this for me. If we do an inquiry and we bring things public, is the complainant protected under public information request? I don't have a comment.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Ron, you're talking about the individual who filed the written complaint.
Yes, sir.
The identity of that individual is protected. The content of the complaint is not. The individual who was the subject of the complaint is not an employee of the county, and so the statute that protects misconduct investigations from public records disclosure does not apply because it is limited to agency employees. It's a complicated answer, but essentially, anything that is produced during the course of this investigation is likely to have to be disclosed in a public record search with the exception of the identifying information of the person who filed the complaint.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's one of the things, I'll make sure that that person is protected. Commissioner Baugh brings up a good point. This is out there everywhere. In our last strategic planning meeting, I got called out by a lot of people in the press and other people for wanting a confidentiality agreement drawn up that our employees would sign. This is the perfect reason why. This is out there in the newspaper. It's in the town on tabloids. We already know that the school board has now put this individual on administrative leave, outcoming our investigation or inquiry, and we haven't even approved to do one yet. So, you know, that's the reason I think that we need to have some protections out there that protect our employees because this is going to get, this is going to get dirty, and names are going to be said, and those employees are going to be out there. So, Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me to have my comments. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Cruz.
Yeah, I'll be quick. I 100% agree with everything Commissioner Baugh said. This is not a, an employee of Manatee County. The person in question was never an employee of Manatee County. We're running an inquiry on something based on the school board basically saying, and I don't get where that comes from, upon that he's on administrative leave until we complete our investigation, which we're not conducting an investigation. If the school board wants to conduct an investigation on their employee, then have at it, and they could certainly speak to whoever they want, whether they're an employee here or not. But I'm just not sure what we're getting out of this, and I also, I feel like there should be further dialogue with the county attorney and HR and figure out exactly what we're hoping to accomplish and what our responsibility is. I also don't, you know, I want to make sure we're not putting the county into a level of responsibility by effectively implying we are by running an investigation when it wasn't our responsibility in the first place. I mean, we took swift action on this, whether it be his initiative or ours, and he's not going to be an employee of this county. So, you know, I just don't know what we're getting with this, and I agree with Commissioner Baugh. I think that this may just turn into more of a witch hunt than a true investigation and whether or not it's our responsibility.
Thank you, sir. Baugh, Clegg, Satcher. Commissioner Baugh.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that because of, you know, my question was not answered that I had about, oh, sorry. Okay. You know, my question did not get answered about whether or not we have been asked to do this by the person. I don't understand where that came from and why. So I have asked, yesterday I did, to do my own public information request. Everybody else is doing one, you know, I'm, we're all hearing about it. I mean, I had one that I had to respond to, and I had nothing. So the point is, is that I've also asked for any communication, any emails by this person to find out where it came from, you know, this request, because I got, I got a feeling, I know, but I want to know for sure. So I just wanted to mention that to you. Thank you.
I did receive an email from this person, and I forwarded it on, I think Clegg and Hopes and I all got it, and I'd asked it to be shared with the entire Board.
That's why I'm on the Board.
But I don't know if it ever was because I can't ask them.
I do not either. It was not directed to me, and I-
I either replied to you or forwarded it to you, one or the other.
I saw a copy of it.
So you didn't share it with the entire Board?
No, and it would not have been appropriate for me to do so for reasons I'd rather not discuss on the record. May I just go ahead and-
Sure.
... address the Board because I'm on the Board to speak. It's my job to tell you all that we need to be really, really careful here. This stuff is fraught with liability, and any individual who is involved in it may, depending upon how things go, lawyer up, and then we're looking at litigation. So I do need to caution all of you about that. I also need to just point out, I understand that it's been reported in the press that the administrative leave action of the school district is tied to whether or not we're going to investigate, but we don't know that. We have not, I have not seen anything communicated by the school district publicly that says that's why they made that decision. So we should be careful not to make the assumption or make statements that that's why that decision was made. It may have been, but it may have been something else. What we say counts in these, in this dialogue, so I think we just need to be careful about making assumptions about things like that. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. And just to be clear, my request for this inquiry is not based on anything that I've read in the paper, nor is it based on the email that I received. I had made this decision long ago when, when things were still chaotic involving this situation. I decided that when we came back from Christmas break, the Board would need to step in and look into this. And my concern is whether or not proper procedures are being followed to protect our employees when an allegation is made, number one, and whether or not it's being followed to protect the accused, number two. People are entitled to due process. I get it, it's not an employee in this building, but you, you can't, this government, you can't have paperwork coming out of this government, documents coming out of this government accusing someone of something, possibly ruining their career, and we don't even look into it. What happens when it is someone with, you know, that is, that does work for this government or it's one of you? Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Procedurally, maybe that's not the best way to say it, but, I mean, I could see this becoming a moot point in the future because we could end up in a situation where it's got to be investigated. But right now, this is, I don't know what fruit we're going after because this person wasn't employed by Manatee County. So the, you know, if Manatee County employee is rightfully or wrongfully accused of something, I feel like we should have procedures in place that are going to get to the bottom of that and protect everyone involved until we do get to the bottom of it. But someone that's not, at the time, employed by Manatee County, I don't know that we do have that duty to get to the bottom of that for them, even though I may, you know, empathize with that situation, and I would hope that other governments, agencies, et cetera, would have that same way of looking at things. If something hasn't been looked at, if it hasn't been investigated, then you shouldn't, you know, assume you know everything revolving it. As far as our procedures, now, that's, that's a different question. Seems like, you know, this is not my area of expertise, HR, but I don't know that I am real pleased with the procedures that took place to do both what the Chair mentioned, which is protect someone that might be accused and protect someone who may very well have been a victim. And so that seems like, that seems like something that unfortunately, in this world, with, you know, over 300 million people in the United States of America, I imagine that's a relatively common, sad to say, but common scenario, and we should have ironclad procedures that take care of both sides of that equation so that everyone is protected moving forward. I don't want, I never want someone to feel like they have to, you know, not say when they're put in a bad position. And I also, as you mentioned, would never, would hate, for me or someone that I know or anyone, to be in a position where they're accused of something and it's trial by accusation or it's loss of job by accusation. Neither of those should happen, but this is a unique situation where this person wasn't our employee. So I don't know that I necessarily want to go down a fact finding, you know, there's two different things that we'd be looking at. What are the facts in this situation, and what are the procedures that were or were not followed? I am interested in the procedures, but I don't know with it not being an employee, if the facts, you know, if that'd be an appropriate role at this time. And like I said, I can foresee a circumstance that I won't mention, but we could end up in a situation where I would assume the county would have to go and find out the facts behind it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Ballard, and then Bearden.
So I think I do agree with Commissioner Satcher on this. I believe I stated in our, our work session that I think there are a lot of issues in HR that need to be dealt with, a lot of procedures that need to be clarified, changed. I think that in the future, we absolutely need ironclad procedures for this type of accusation, and I think that we need to make sure that that is updated and created immediately. Being that we do have a situation where this was not an employee, we have a situation that is resolved, I don't know that it's prudent to go any, any further with an outside investigation at this point. I think we're potentially getting ourselves into a quagmire. But that being said, if this Board does vote to, to go that route and would like me to be the liaison, I'm willing to do that.
Potential quagmire liaison.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Bearden, and then Baugh.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I think that this is an eye-opener, right, for policies and procedures that may need to be revisited and looked at in regards to, you know, how to handle situations. Maybe we also need to look at directing the county administrator to do more. I don't know if we're doing any type of quarterly training regarding HR issue. Maybe, maybe we need to increase that. I know, I know that's a, that's a burden on a, on a lot of people, but, you know, I think that constant reminder there can definitely keep it front of mind. As far as moving forward, I don't, I don't necessarily think it's necessary, you know, in order for us to conduct an investigation. I just think that maybe we just need to re, I mean, really intensify our, our HR department and look at our policies and procedures and ensure that we go by the book at all times so every, everybody is protected. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. And to be clear, HR may have followed this entirely by the book. I don't know. That's sort of the point. Commissioner Baugh.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I do know that we do have procedures in place. The question is, if there is a question, is whether or not those procedures were followed. I do have my concerns about that. However, I did say, and I'm glad that Commissioner Ballard brought up our workshop because in that workshop, in fact, I just found out from somebody that evidently there was an article in the Sarasota Herald today about that workshop, and I am quoted by saying that we have issues in HR. And so if you'll look back at that meeting, I did request that the Director of HR meet with all the Commissioners individually, not to just introduce herself, but to get into what are our written procedures for this type of thing? How do we handle that? Because I know this county has procedures in place, or at least it did. Whether or not they're good, I can't tell you. I've never, I don't know. But I do believe that what I would prefer the Board, what I would like to see is, you know, maybe the Board meeting with our HR Director and going over individually with the procedures in place. Because as I said, my, my main concern at this point, I hate that the situation happened, but at the same time, we have a couple of employees here that are still employed here, and, and I don't want to do or say anything that would jeopardize that because I think they've been through quite a bit. So I just wanted to mention that. I think we should meet individually with the Director, myself. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I apologize for speaking so close, but I just wanted to step back for one moment, and maybe not in this specific instance, but just for the Board's consideration, I want to recall for those of us that have been here for two years, the Sarasota Medieval Fair, and how long those accusations went on, and how long we were in the dark because we didn't have information. So everyone was pressuring us, why don't you do something? And we didn't have any independent information on what was going on, and it came to us months and months later in 400 pages from across the street, very slow and hard to take action on. Accurate, it was accurate when it got to us, I believe, but very slow and very hard to act on. And then in this situation where, you know, and I don't know all of what everyone's intent is, and of course, I think hopefully the, I think for all of us, the intent would just be for the truth and to protect people, but I just want to point out that this is another circumstance where even if we don't want to have a separate position like I proposed a week or so ago, maybe at least an outside agency, something on tap that answers to us and gets us information when it's important to us. So this would be an instance where instead of this vote, the vote would just be, you know, Board, I want to propose that we have our, and y'all can name it what you want, but our investigative arm look into this just so that we have more facts on this situation. And I think it might be a real easy 7-0 vote in that situation. Just a thought moving forward because it does seem like the more, you know, situations, or at least there are some similarities between situations that do arise as we endeavor to lead this government and, and these people into a more prosperous situation here in Manatee County. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. All right. I don't see anyone else on the Board at this time. Mr. Clegg.
I just have one final comment if we're wrapping up this discussion. And it is not something she knows I'm going to do, but I need to make a comment about Commissioner Baugh. Because when she became aware of this, she reached out to the county's legal counsel and said, I'm concerned about this, and I need to know how we should handle it. And that is her right. That's the right of every single Commissioner up here, and that was the right way to handle it. So if there are any questions later, I want to make sure the record's clear. That is how that happened, and that's how I became involved in it.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg.
You're very welcome.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, let's move on then, and we will go to Commissioner Comments. It's a new year, so we will start with, and if you have, there's no action, sir. If you have requests for a future work session, let's just sort of lump that together, and so request that during your Commissioner Comments. So we'll start with District 1. Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, sir. I had a meeting with our Head of EMS and one of the Deputy Administrators, and I just wanted to report back that it just went really well. I do have concerns and vision that I think the Board might be, you know, behind me on moving forward in the administration as well. But overall, I know, I speak to people in the community that are concerned about our first responders, and of course, that's a, that's a priority of mine, but to see the thing- But to see the things that we have that are in the works or working right now with 42 brand-new approved positions under ARP funding, multiple new ambulances coming online and stations, and it's ju, and it seems like people, you know, our employees seem to be happy with our last collective bargaining agreement with the union. So I am hoping that we see attrition go down, recruitment go up, and we get more EMS so that the ones that we currently have are not required or, or close to required to work as much overtime as they are. So I just want to say that I, I, that's an issue that's on my radar, and the meeting that I held did go well overall, and Bob asked some great questions. He looked right at Jimmy and he said, if I increased your budget by 50%, what would you do? You know, and how was, it was a great, you know, question, because I feel like especially employees that have been here for quite a while, they've been, and this is not in the last two years, but they've been forced to do so much on a meager budget, and, and I don't think this is a place where we need to be skimping. And so to get that way of thinking in there or to be a part of it was exciting. So I just wanted to let commissioners know about that, and, and that's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. District Two.
Thank you, Chair. So I would like to talk a little bit about a work session on canal dredging. I don't know that that's been set, but if we can get that set, I think that there are a lot of, a lot of people who live on those residential canals who would, who would really appreciate some, some attention from the board on that. I would also like to address our nonprofit grant funding and where some of that money is, is potentially going. I know that, I, I just want to ensure that the, the grants that we're funding are, are going to places that, that our, our taxpayers would, would feel comfortable with. Also addressing the opioid crisis, I would like to have a meeting to discuss some of the boutique courts. So some of the things like expansion of drug court, other crossover courts, maybe human trafficking court. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. District Three. So red tide has been lingering off of the beach for weeks and weeks now. The, the winds have shifted, and I think they're going to shift again soon to push it offshore again, but the, we had a strong offshore wind for several weeks that was holding red tide off, but things shifted. It did come up onto the beach and up and somewhat up into the bay around, you know, obviously Longboat Pass, basically the north and south end of, of Anna Maria. So we have seen some fish kills. We have had crews out there cleaning up the beach. Carmine's done a great job having the guys out there cleaning up the beach. We're hoping the winds are going to shift offshore again soon. It doesn't mean that red tide is gone, but it's not lapping up against the beach, so, but that is a concern out there. Also, Carmine and Molly are now running Parks and Rec, or we're going to call it Sports and Leisure, Sports and Leisure now. I've had a couple of meetings with them since they took over. They're doing a great job. I'm thrilled with that move, Dr. Hopes. At GT Bray, we have a new EMS station going in. It's coming along nicely, so we're very happy with that. Our guys are currently in a double wide, so they'll be thrilled to get into an EMS station. I wanted to thank you all for your participation on Christmas Eve, feeding on-duty deputies and paramedics. I know it was a great idea until the weather report came out, but, but I appreciate you all coming. I think we all had a great time, honestly. That was a good sort of, sort of bonding moment there. And then lastly, we have a neighborhood meeting at GT Bray at 9:00 AM in the gymnasium this Saturday, and that is the, the meeting on 59th Street. And so if any of you want to attend that, should be a lot of fun. I think it's going to be a chilly morning, but we'll be in the gym, and the Public Works guys will all be there in force to, you know, give as much information from the standpoint of an engineer and a project manager as, as humanly possible to keep our, our citizens informed. So, and if that's for now, I think that's all I have for District Three. District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Once again, I do appreciate all the citizens that come in and give us their ideas, their opinions, because we do work for them, and I do appreciate the debate going back and forth even amongst us here on the dais. Last night, I had a great meeting with the Woodfield Estates Homeowner Association. Their concerns are still some of my concerns, where streetlights. I think we need to have a streetlight survey done by district and see where streetlights are needed within the county. I do believe lighting up neighborhoods and lighting up streets does prevent crime, and so I'd like to see if we could do a workshop or something of that nature, maybe not that in-depth, but maybe the county administrator can put something together for us. Another concern that we have is that we do need to help our sheriff get more deputies. I've talked to the sheriff and folks over there at the Sheriff's Department. We need to get more deputies. We need to help him get more deputies. He's losing deputies to other counties for pay, and we need to do whatever we can to help them, because we have some issues, that we, we have some reoccurring issues now on 41, where ladies are walking the sidewalks again, and I, it's just, I can't get enough deputies out there to get these people off the street. So, Mr. Chair, thank you very much for this, this morning. Thank you for your input, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, sir. I'm glad you brought up the streetlights again. You and I talked about it in the workshop the other day, and I, my meeting is coming up with Chad and, and Charlie on that soon.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Clegg, I have you still on the board. Looks like you're just, quite the monologue going on. Yep, I got you off, sorry. District Five.
Hot dog. All right. Well, it's very exciting to hear some of the comments that I'm now hearing from commissioners that I never used to hear. I, I think Commissioner Ballard is spot on. We need to look at some of these nonprofits. I actually sent the county administrator an email yesterday asking about one because of some of the things that they're funding. And so I know that we participate with some of the nonprofits, but I, I need a better understanding of how and when and where and why. So that is something that needs to be looked at. Carmine, is he like the director now of?
The Parks side of things.
I don't know. I have not been told that. Is that, is that right, is he?
No, ma'am.
I know, he's been here a long time.
He is the deputy director, the role that he's been acting in for some time.
Yeah.
With regards to grounds.
Okay.
And so as I had mentioned prior, I forget which meeting, that the selection had been made of Molly and Carmine, who were both in the acting roles. We did interview other candidates, and their positions were made permanent. So Carmine is the deputy director over sports and leisure, over grounds.
Okay.
And facilities. And Molly is the deputy director over the more activity aspects of sports and leisure.
Well, the only reason I ask, I mean, they've both been with us for a long, long time, especially Carmine, and I just wanted to make sure that I said congratulations if that was the case, because I didn't know. So the other thing, Commissioner Ron, you mentioning the sheriff's office, you know, I, I know that this commission, I started to say board, but it wasn't this board, for the last two years, we pretty much, thanks to the administrator to some part, you know, we did increase the sheriff's budget to what exactly he was asking for, and, and we did it because we knew we were growing at such a fast pace that, you know, we needed him to be able to, to, you know, to, to, to deal with that. So I think that, I haven't had that conversation with the sheriff, but I will. I'm, it's interesting. I want to know, you know, how many openings he has and why, if it's regarding pay, because I know at one time, probably maybe three or four years ago at the most, I think, you know, the compression on salaries, it was difficult, but I thought that the sheriff's office had, had gotten out of that and increased the, the pay of the deputies. So thank you for bringing that to our attention. I think it's very important. The last thing that I would, I would say, and I did have this conversation with the county attorney, since there is some discussion, I'm going to go back to what we just finished talking about, but I said I was going to make a motion. You know, I, I would like to make a motion that we unconfirm the fourth deputy county administrator position at this time.
Second.
So that it's open for the administrator to look at in the future.
Second.
That's it. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Baugh that has been seconded by Commissioner Satcher, and the motion is to unconfirm.
Rescind the confirmation.
Let's rescind the confirmation. Let's, let's reword that. Mr. Clegg, would you, would you word this, please?
I would, and I think it's important to understand, we received a letter on December 13th from Mr. Titlebaum saying he did not want to take this position. So he never took it. If he had taken it, then he could only be removed by the administrator, but he did not. So what I would suggest, if the board wants to revisit that decision, is to say, based on the December 13, 2022 letter received from Mitchell Titlebaum, I move to rescind his confirmation as a deputy county administrator.
Commissioner Satcher? Do you second that?
Yes, I do. Do you want it to include the position overall, or just this particular?
That would have to be a separate motion. You could do it, but I know the administrator might have something to say about that. But that would, they need to be a separate motion. I apologize for interrupting, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Okay. Would anyone like to come forward from the, anyone from the public like to come forward to speak on the specific agenda item, or this, not agenda item, on the motion on the floor? Okay. Seeing no one, we're going to close public comment. I'm going to make a statement before we move on. Commissioner Satcher said something well earlier when we were having a discussion about this. He said that he did not want to see essentially accusation and then conviction of someone without any investigation. You said, you said loss of job without trial is what you said. I asked for an inquiry, an investigation into this, and the board said no. And so now the board is looking to do exactly what Commissioner Satcher said that he did not want to do, which was see someone lose their job without any due process, and very disappointing to me, Commissioner Satcher seconded the motion.
Excuse me?
So, now I have the floor.
Well, let me know when you're.
I have the floor. And so it is concerning to me to see this board dive into the cancel culture and literally cancel a person while giving them zero due process. Commissioner Baugh, you have the floor.
Thank you very much.
But you mentioned me. Can I go next?
I will just say this. The person that you're referring to gave us written notice that he was not taking the position. There is nothing that we are doing in this situation other than going by what he said and did. It is basically unconfirming the position so that the county administrator can look at it and move forward. We have it in writing. What more do we need?
Whatever helps you sleep at night.
I sleep just fine.
So I, I disagree that this is any sort of example of cancel culture or, or moving forward without due process for, for, for this person. He chose not to take the position. If he had chosen to take the, the position despite the accusations, he would have been afforded the full opportunity to have an investigation and to have any sort of due process that any employee would want or would, would be entitled to in that situation. Because he chose to withdraw himself from the process, he's not entitled to, to any kind of investigation of the investigation or, or of the, of the accusations. He chose to take himself out of consideration, therefore, we have no obligation to move forward with any kind of investigation. It's not, it has nothing to do with cancel culture or due process. That was his choice.
Commissioner Satcher.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I, I understand your argument and, and see some validity there. So I just want to clear up why I did jump to second that. Two different reasons. First of all, the day of, you know, the, the time this vote was initially made, if I remember correctly, that was a, one of our very first meetings and had a lot of 6-1 votes for me, or at least it felt like it. I was fighting the tide all day long and, and so, which is what it is. And then when that came forward, I was not real comfortable with it at that time for multiple reasons. I, I have had some people that I really believe in their business sense in this county say, you know, you need to watch the next four years. They told me this when I first started. They said, because if you don't watch it, it could get out of hand as far as administration and government growing. And that was a person that I respect that had that conversation with me. So for that reason, I was a little bit leery, for that reason, I was a little bit leery. And then just also because it seemed quick, we, I didn't, never spoke to that person, still haven't ever had a conversation with that person. And so I was already, you know, in a normal meeting, I probably would have voted against anyway, but I was trying not to pick fights that day because I had enough coming anyway. And, and then the second reason is because the very next day, I spoke at the Manatee Republican Club, I believe it was, the one that meets at Pier 22. And it's an interesting club, and, you know, some good people there. And, but anyway, I, I was the speaker, and I, I tell you, before the meeting, and then as people talked about the issue, I had multiple people say, why are you approving more people? Why are you getting more, you know, deputy administrators? This is, you know, they disagreed with that decision, and I felt like even if it is the right thing, maybe we should do a better job of communicating the need and why it's appropriate so that our own, you know, these are, are people hopefully that are in our court, so they see it. So sometimes I think that there may be decisions that are the right decision, but we also need to make sure that we're, you know, right beside someone, not in front of them, not behind them, but right beside them, as Commissioner Bearden says. And so that, I was already on the line, then the next day, I was like, oh, there were other people paying attention, and they didn't like that vote either, and then here we are. So that, and that's why I also mentioned the position itself, rescinding it. So I don't see this, and I, and this should not be seen as any type of comment from me on the facts of any situation or, you know, taken as a negative against anyone. And I, I will also ask before our, our final vote, I would like to ask the county attorney, I mean, are you, are you comfortable with this motion and this vote? Does this put us in a worse position moving forward if this were to pass?
Well, I'll speak strictly to labor law, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Satcher, and at the risk of putting myself out of a job, Commissioner Ballard has given you all a correct statement of the law. Because this individual submitted a written withdrawal of interest in the position, we are not in a position where we have to go through due process or anything of the like to revisit this issue. It would be different had he taken the job. You know, we have talked about this extensively within the office, and I, I am, the short answer is legally, yes, I am comfortable with it. From a policy standpoint, I will defer to the board.
And I think technically, I still have the floor, and so I want to take the opportunity just to echo maybe a couple of the sentiments of the chair. Everyone, you know, before any decision were to be made by anyone that does employ somebody, they would need to know facts, and if they can't find those facts, then they would need to conduct themselves as if they don't know the facts, because they don't. So, but I can't, I'm not in charge of them. I'm just in charge of us and, or a seventh of, of that, this board. And thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. Mr. County Attorney, I'm next on the board here. Does Mr. County Attorney, is there any necessity for this vote? Does this vote change anything?
From a policy standpoint, that's a debate I won't, I should not enter. From a legal standpoint, I am a little concerned about some of the dialogue I've read in the paper, that the job is still open and available to somebody who has submitted a letter saying, I don't want the job. I mean, that is.
The vote to, the vote to confirm.
Not the normal way that appointments of people to, to positions like this are handled.
I guess my question is when we, let me put it back, go backwards here. The vote to confirm, my understanding is that that is somewhat ceremonial.
No.
In the end. Is it required that this board confirm deputies?
It is required in our code board.
And now that he's rescinded, is it necessary that this board vote to unconfirm, is what's written down? I know that's not what we decided, the language we, we decided on, but is it, is this vote necessary?
From a legal standpoint, I, I would have to say no, but it's, it's, yeah, obviously the board has strong feelings about it, and there's a lot of things the board does that aren't legally necessary.
Sure. Okay. So it's a, it's a completely unnecessary vote that the board is taking after someone had an accusation made against them and the board refused to look into the merits of the accusation.
My lord.
That's a fact. These are facts, right? We, we just refused to look into the accusation, and we've been told this is an unnecessary vote. But doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't really. It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't really give a very positive statement or, or outlook to anyone who's thinking of applying for that job or any other job with this government in the future as to whether the board will stand behind you if you're accused of something. Dr. Hopes, you're next on the board, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just for the benefit of the three new commissioners and maybe for the memory of the four, we had a similar situation with regards to the board confirming a candidate for an HR director, and the individual later decided he didn't want to take the job. And, you know, later on, I just brought you a new candidate. I don't recall the board rescinding, pardon me?
We did.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Baugh is on the board, last one on the board.
There's no need. That, that's not even a symbol, something, not even worth it.
Okay. So no one else is on the board? We can cast our votes at this time, commissioners.
I have my computer turned off already since we don't have any great permission comments.
Okay. So then we'll take a verbal vote at this time. The motion, the motion on the board is to, Mr. Clegg, would you please recite the motion on the board?
I, I can say it again, yes, sir. Based on the December 13, 2022 letter from Mr. Titlebaum, I move to rescind his confirmation as deputy county administrator.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Madam Clerk, it passes by a vote of six to one with Van Austin Bridge in opposition. Commissioner Baugh, the floor is still yours, ma'am.
I'm completed.
That's it?
That's all. You want me to do more? I will. I got a whole file here, Mr. Chairman, if you want me to move on.
Hold off on your, hold off on your file. Commissioner Cruz's stomach is growling.
Okay. Don't ask again. Don't say it.
We'll go to at-large District Six.
Wonderful. I'm glad we got through that.
I'm after you.
I felt like I got hijacked there for a moment.
I did, too.
Homeless situation, something, obviously, that's something that we, we need to continue to address. Love to obviously get that situated on the workshop. Commissioner Satcher regarding paramedics and EMS, something else I'd like to address. Another thing that I would like to address, all right, is veterans VA services cut down their queue times, okay, for claims, for VA claims for veterans. So right now, we're looking at about a three-week timeframe by the time someone comes up to actually get an appointment, and I believe that we may need extra help in regards to that, to be able to cut down those queue times. I don't think it's necessary that our veterans need to be waiting three or four weeks to be able to process those claims. And I think that we can definitely improve that. So it's something we can look into and talk about in the workshop, because I know that seems to be an issue, and I'd like us to be first class when it comes to our veterans and all, in regards to that. So another thing is, we've spoke about this, but an extensive TAP program in our Veterans Department, which is a transitional assistance program, right? One that's more extensive, because like, like myself, and I don't know if Commissioner Ron experienced the same thing, but the veterans that are, especially the Marines, that are, that are getting out now aren't having essentially a, a very good TAP program in my, in my opinion. And I know that's something that we, we are heading towards, but I'd like to really utilize other veteran organizations to, to come in to, to address those necessary resources that, that may be available to them. So I'd like us to have a first-class extensive TAP program in the county. So that's about it.
Thank you, sir. At-large District Seven.
Yeah, don't forget, fair starts on Thursday, and that's it. I'm good.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other new business?
Mr. Chair, I have one question for the board. I'm sorry to hold you up, everybody's hungry. Last week, you all asked me to look at arrangements where aides work directly for commissioners, and I've done enough research on that, looking at it. We've got four or five different examples that if you want me to bring that forward, I can, but I, I really think I should have a, a motion and vote from the board directing me to do that. I think we could do it by resolution, but it's a significant change, and I don't want to jump into it unless that's what the board wants me to be doing.
So we have a motion from Commissioner Baugh.
Hey, that was easy.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion from, we have a motion from Commissioner Baugh directing the county attorney to bring forward a policy. How do you want me to finish that?
Just to allow Commissioner aides to work directly for commissioners.
There you go. For, to allow Commissioner aides to work directly for commissioners, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bearden. We'll open this item up to public comment. Is there anyone from the public who would like to come forward to speak about the motion on the floor? Seeing no one, we'll close public comment. There are no commissioners on the board for, to speak. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk, it passes unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Is there any further business?
No, sir.